Either turn their cellphones off or put them on the silent feature, please. Meeting of the Committee of Adjustment is being livestreamed on YouTube, so when you do come up to speak, please make sure you speak clearly into the microphone, we'd appreciate that. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, as amended, this committee of the, uh, meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for minor variances from provisions of the zoning bylaw, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new laws. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or the applicant is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside the hearing room in an effort to resolve your concerns or your issues. If no person is present in interest, the committee or applicant will, uh, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and undertake the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or the agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and then there'll be a timer on the wall here so you can self-monitor. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium in the middle here, clearly state your name and address, and file a decision request card. I'll just say generally, if anyone wants a copy of the decision of the Committee of Adjustment, please fill out a decision request form, they're located at the end of the horseshoe here, and leave it with a member of staff. That way, you're insured to get a copy of the Committee of Adjustment decision, and also, if the matter is appealed to T-Lab, you'll get a copy of their correspondence, but also, please ensure your email address is on there. As if the matter does go to T-Lab, they correspond by email. So I encourage anyone who wants a copy of the decision of the item you're interested in today, please fill out one of those cards. When addressing the committee, please, as I said, please come to the podium and state your name and address. If you have a written submission to read from, please hand it to the deputy, Deputy Secretary Treasurer on my right when you are done. We'll firstly hear from the applicant, and they'll make an app, submission to the committee on the application as submitted. Then individuals either in support or opposition to the application will be allowed to speak. If there's several speakers sharing the same view, we ask maybe to appoint a spokesperson because it's not necessary to repeat the same information to the committee. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their submission. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has the opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for a decision, and this will mark the end of the discussion. And please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. If you don't agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal to the Toronto local appeal body. The decision of the Committee of Adjustment at the bottom will indicate what the process is for filing an appeal. Today, we will not be entertaining extensive revisions to proposals at the hearing today, just so that people are aware of that. Okay, um, confirmation of the last, minutes of the last meeting?
Through you, Madam Chair, I move a motion to adopt the minutes.
Do I have a second or?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, minutes are adopted. Any declarations of interest in this time slot?
Uh, this time.
Nope. Okay, thank you. Any files to be closed?
No.
Okay. Any deferral requests in this time slot? Okay. Okay, we're now going to move to vet the agenda. So, um, number one, 37 to Forest Road, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Okay, that item will be held. Encourage you to go outside to speak. Item number two, 516 Perth Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Okay. Item number three, 17 Hawken Avenue, agent or applicant?
Yes.
Okay, anyone in interest? Number four, 379 Eglington Avenue East, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Number five, 452 Winnett Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest?
Yes.
Okay, someone in interest, if you can go outside and have a discussion. Item number six, 9 and 11 Madison Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Okay, that item will be held down. Number seven, 226 Dunvegan Road, agent or applicant?
Yes.
Okay, anyone in interest? Okay, that item will be held as well. Item number eight, 110 Glendale Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Item number nine, 227 and a half Brock Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Item number 10, 31 Hilton Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Number 11, 126 Ava Road, agent or applicant? Thank you, anyone in interest? Number 12, 207 Perth Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Number 13, 33 Gardner Road, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Ma'am in the blue, you put your hand up, what, what, no, I'm sorry.
31 Gardner.
33 Gardner?
Yes.
Are you here to, are you in interest?
Issue objecting.
Are you objecting?
No.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we'll hide that item down. The indivi, there's a gentleman behind you who's agent, we encourage you to go outside and have a discussion. Number 14, 9 Mathuen Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? You're in interest, okay, connect, that'll be held down. Number 15, 117 Blackthorn Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Number 16, 120 Humbercrest Boulevard, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Number 17, 78 Alberta Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Okay, that item will be held down. Number 18, 364 Gilbert Avenue, agent or applicant?
Actor.
Okay, thank you, sorry, you're looking in the distance, thank you. Anyone here in interest? 1985 Clovelie Avenue, agent or applicant? Anyone in interest? Number 20, 34 Glenair Road, agent or applicant? Thank you. Anyone in interest? Okay, so that item will be held. You have a discussion outside. So the items in this time slot held are number one, 37 to Forest Road, number five, 452 Winnett Avenue, number six, 9 and 11 Madison Avenue, number seven, 226 Dunvegan Road, number 13, 33 Gardner Road, number 14, 9 Mathuen Avenue, number 17, 78 Alberta Avenue, and number 20, 34 Glenair Road. Right? So we encourage all those people to go outside and have a discussion, we'll, we'd encourage you to go now, we'll get ready for the first item then. So number, we're proceeding with item number two, 516 Perth Avenue. The agent or applicant could please come forward. The committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. You objecting?
Hang on, Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Um, there's objectors for number 11.
Okay. So who's the agent or applicant for Ava Road? Okay, there's a person here in opposition, so that matter will be held down.
Okay, the applicant's over there, sir.
Sir?
Sir? The applicants are over by the map.
Okay, so just while the room's calming down, I'm just going to indicate what's before the committee for 516 Perth Avenue. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, email correspondence from the Assistant Planner to Community Planning, City Planning, East Tobico, York District, four form letters in support signed by the owners and occupants of 511, 517, 521, and 522 Perth Avenue, and from 524 Perth Avenue. Okay, could everybody please clear the room if you're going out to speak to someone? Otherwise, we need quiet because we're proceeding with the agenda, please and thank you. Your name and address, sir?
Yes, good morning, my name is Ben Domingos, I'm the applicant agent for this application, 516 Perth Avenue.
Thank you. Committee members, do you need a presentation, or would you like to proceed to questions?
Um, questions.
Okay, questions then?
Um, I would just like to ask you, are there any examples of basement walkouts in the front along?
Yes, there are several actually on Perth Avenue. In fact, the next door neighborhood, 520, has one.
Okay. So excuse me, we need some quiet in the room, so can people please go outside to have a conversation? Yes, Mr. Russell, go ahead.
Um, sir, and variance number three, why are you doing dwelling at 148, 1.48 meters when the setback requirement is 5.2 me, 5.21 meters?
Right, okay, so this is actually an alignment with the existing homes, actually, it's aligned with the house to the south. What happens here in this particular case is the front wall is being defined as the front of the porch because there is this entry into the basement suite. The main two-story wall is actually set back 3.2 meters, which is also aligned with the house to the south and with probably, I would say, 85 to 90 percent of all the homes on the street. So I'm actually bringing it in alignment with the existing context of the street.
Because currently, your home sits quite a bit back.
Oh, quite a bit, yes. 10 meters, yes.
Um, on your, your front yard landscape, you're quite out 50 percent, what's the reason you're seeking 39 percent?
Yeah, so the reason, the reason that comes about is because we are adding the walkout stair, so therefore, that takes up a large portion of the landscape right off, just there. Also, the stairs leading up to the front porch as well, so it becomes almost impossible to have very much landscaping in there at all because of the access.
Um, variance number five, uh, you're now seeking to reduce your landscape by 33 percent from 75 percent to 51.7 percent. Is there a reason for that?
1.7 percent?
Total, to 51.
51 percent, I have 51 percent proposed of the, of the soft landscape, and it's, the required 75 percent, we have 51.
51.7.
Right.
Um, why, why should we allow you to decrease?
Well, again, this, this is due in part with the existence of the stairs, required stairs down, walkout stairs down to the basement, and stair up to the porch.
You can't locate the stairs anywhere else because I see you have problems with the stairs located on the, on the front lot line.
The front lot line, our, yes, there, the stairs in the front lot are lining up with the stairs to the neigh, with the neighborhood to the south, so we're not creating anything that's really different, we're kind of being consistent and constant, you know, with the neighbor. It's, it's nearly impossible to get a walkout stair on the side, um, uh, in this particular case, for, for this to work in terms of the basement apartment.
So to get a walk, that's the only location you can have that stairs, because you're quite out there to, to have a point six meters of setback, and, um, from the east front lot line.
Yes, uh.
You're going to top, to point one, um, point one meter setback.
I know, I know, it's close, but again, that is, it lines up with the existing stairs of the neighbor, so that's where we set things.
Which, which neighborhood, next one?
South, yeah.
South.
Yeah, which basically, they're going to be almost like touching each other, they're like right beside each other, so it's, uh, becomes a very constant and consistent feature.
Okay. Any other questions?
No other questions from you, Madam Chair.
So, thank you, we're in committee?
Through you, Madam Chair, there are many additions in the neighborhood, as we know, this house is set back quite a bit. I think that what's being done actually makes this more in line with the rest of the neighborhood. I believe that it fits the character and meets the intent of the bylaws and meets the four tests. If there are no further comments, I would move approval of the application.
Do I have a second or?
I'll second it because it meets the character of the neighborhood and it's new structure.
Okay, all in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Item number three, 17 Holton Avenue. The committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, correspondence from Nelson Espinola, the agent, and five signature petition in support signed by the owners or occupants of 15, 19, 21, 23, and 25 Holton Avenue, and could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Very good morning, my name is Nelson Espinola, and I'm here as the agent for the application.
Okay. Uh, committee members, do you need a presentation, or can we proceed to questions?
Um, questions.
Okay.
Um, could you tell me how the height's going to compare with the house to the right?
Uh, to the right?
Yeah, I think it's, um, it has three stories, the right, the, on the, when you're facing it, anyway, is it going to be about the same height?
Yeah, it is going to be about the same height.
So I see in back and forth with the planning technician, there was some slight changes? Are they slight to, you're not making adjustments then?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Russell?
Just the landscaping, your, your, your reduction of landscaping requirement is 30, 38 percent. These days, we are flooding all over the place, so what do you do to maintain good, good structure there?
We're pretty much maintaining the existing landscaped area that is there, uh, the deck at the back is existing, um, so it's, it's an existing condition.
Okay, that's okay for me.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, we're in committee, discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, I, um, I'm going to move for approval of this, of this application because, um, I, I, having looked at it, and I was concerned with the landscape, but it seemed like since it's an existing condition, I'll move for approval and that it meets four tests, it's not all correct with the neighborhood.
Do I have a second or?
I'll second that, and I'd just like to note that both adjacent neighbors are in support.
All in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Item number four, 379 Eglington Avenue East. The committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from Andrew Dale's agent, email correspondence from the Assistant Planner Heritage Preservation Services, City Planning, and correspondence in opposition from the owner of 383 Eglington Avenue East. Could we please have your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Andrew Dale's, 147 Liberty Street in Toronto.
Okay.
I'm the planning consultant for the owner of 379 Eglington Avenue East.
Thank you. Committee members, do you need a presentation, or would you like to proceed to questions? Okay, any questions then?
Um, from your submission, am I clear to understand it was a restaurant previously?
It was a retail store.
Retail store, but way before that, was it not a legally?
You know, I don't have that information, uh, but, um, yeah, my, my understanding is that the most recent use.
Yeah, recently, it's retail, but.
A legally non-conforming retail use.
I thought I read that at one time it was a restaurant before.
Well, there's two adjacent restaurants.
Yeah, there's Gabby's and McVertry's or something like that, yeah.
Some Mc, yeah.
Or pubs, I, more of a pub food place.
Right.
Okay.
Do you have a heritage condition being placed on the property?
Uh, it, it is listed, my understanding is that it is listed, but Heritage Preservation Services has no concerns with the proposal.
Is there any parking requirements for that, for your restaurant?
No, we, we have no variances required. This was a, a, a section, section 42, sub two application.
Two, oh, there are already two bars and two restaurants.
And this is a, the proposal's for a cafe, there's no liquor license being requested.
Okay, um, I'm satisfied, Madam Chair, um, if you'd like.
We're in, we're in committee then? Okay, discussion or motion?
If you'd like to move forward, I'm unsatisfied that it meets the four tests, it's not in all of the crafted neighborhood, I'm, um, I'm making the motion to approve this application with the condition that, um, that it's listed with heritage, it, there's no, at this time, there's no.
Heritage hasn't asked for any conditions.
No conditions, yes. So, just, I'm making the motion that recognizing that this location is listed.
Okay, I'll second that motion without that condition because it is a listed property, so we don't need to address that in any way. I don't think it's our purview to, to do that, but it is a listed property.
So it has protection.
But heritage doesn't have any comments on it.
You see, I, I'm accepting the position that is listed, but even though there's no condition, I understand that there's no, there's no condition, I, I know this.
So I'm not sure what your motion is then?
Well, my motion is, is that we continue to, to, and the heritage, and we recognize that heritage has listed it, although there's no condition at this time.
So that can be part of the record, but how, but you're not making it a condition of the decision?
No, no, it's part of the record, it has.
Okay, so it's in the minutes as part of the record, um, but the motion is to approve without condition?
Without condition, yeah.
Do I have a second or?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Your application's approved.
Thanks very much.
Item number eight, 110 Glendale Avenue. Committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, email correspondence from the Assistant Planner, Community Planning, City Toronto, City Planning, Toronto East York District, and a staff report from the Director of Community Planning, Toronto and East York District. Is there anybody here for number eight, 110 Glendale? There was some, maybe there, an agent on something else and they're outside? They were here when we called the item.
Yeah, they were here earlier.
110 Glendale?
I didn't call them.
Okay, we're going to go forward then. Number nine, 227 and a half Brock Avenue. The committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a letter from Trevor Gaines, the agent, staff report from the Director of Community Planning, Toronto and East York District, letters of opposition from 229 Brock Avenue, and can we have your name and address, please?
My name is Trevor Gaines, I'm the agent and applicant here on behalf of the owners.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, do you need a presentation, or would you like to proceed to questions?
Questions.
Okay, any questions then, please?
So this, this addition is going on top of the existing?
Yeah.
You're not going beyond that?
We're just got a little third floor pop-up, it doesn't occupy the full third, third floor, it's just creating a master bedroom suite for the upper unit, and the remainder of the roof would just be amenity space for that unit's rooftop terraces.
And you're aware of the planning condition?
I am, I was going to question planning because they're mentioning privacy screening on both sides, both north and south, so south I can understand because we have neighbors, but on the north side, we face the street, there's like, uh, I think over 12 meters between houses, and I have photos of the, the 229, they have second floor terraces a couple street down, so, um, we're fine with it, but I just leave it in the committee's hands, I don't think it's necessary on the north side.
Can you have a picture of the north side with the, the, um, water requirements?
So the, the question was, our neighbor across the street, if they have terraces, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, um, yes, um, yes, they, um.
Yeah, so on, on page three, photograph eight.
Yeah, one second, I'm just looking, I'm just looking at item number two, your picture. Page three.
Page three, photograph eight, that's the adjacent property, even though it says 234 Brock, that's a, that's inherent, that should actually be 229 Brock, that's the immediate neighbor north of Marshall, you see there's second floor terrace which faces the street, and photograph seven, that's a couple doors.
Mr. Gaines, um, that house is turned the other direction.
That house faces Brock, and then the, the elevation you're looking at faces the side street, the flanking street.
Is it on the other side of the road?
It's on the north side of Marshall, that's correct. So our, our north elevation faces this elevation, we're on the south side of Marshall, on the corner.
Okay.
So, like I, like I said, um, terraces are, they're in the area, uh, even, even down the, the street, there was a third floor addition, very similar, um, they have a privacy terraces across the front, but that's kind of a mid-block rowhouse, you can see an example of that on page two of the photographs, photograph seven, kind of a rowhouse situation, mid, mid-unit, so terrace, uh, privacy screening around the front on all three sides, no problem. Like I said, we're, we're fine with it, we expected it, but I'm just questioning on the north side, I just don't know if we'll cast more shadows down the road, given the neighbor was referring to shadowing. But I'll leave that in your hands, we're fine either way.
All right, my next question to you, sir, is, um, under variance number, bylaw number 438, variance number, number two, um, what's, what's there presently? You have the outer dwelling will be located 0.4 meters from the front lot line, where's it presently?
Right there, those are the existing setbacks.
Is it existing?
So, like I said, we're just building a little pop-up on the third floor, but the, the committee picked up all the setbacks of the existing dwellings, so there's no, we're not actually touching the ground in any of this addition, other than a walkout at the back, um, the additions are purely just a little, so many square meters for a little third floor, um, bedroom.
Why, why is it that you're, you're addressing parking when you're just doing it at the top of the building?
Because we're adding units, so right now, it's a single-family dwelling, we're adding two additional dwelling units.
Yes.
That triggers parking.
Well, you're saying that you still not providing any.
We have, we have one spot, a legal spot, probably two spots in the garage at the back, subsized, so, uh, we're, we're a substandard one spot for this proposal.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, I think I'm satisfied, I don't know if my.
Okay, just any other questions? No, okay.
Uh, yeah, the, Mr. Gaines has, um, has raised the issue about the north, um, the planning recommend.
So are we in committee, or do you have other questions?
No, no, we're not.
Okay, so we're in committee?
In committee.
Discussion?
I'm through you, Madam Chair, I think that the, what's being proposed fits within the context of this neighborhood, um, the addition is on the existing footprint, so it's really not adding any, any length or, or variances to the side. I would be prepared to move approval, and I, I would be okay to amend the condition in the planning report to have screening on the south side only, as I, I mean, maybe when they have the deck, the owners will want to have screening from the street, but right now, there's no overlook on that north side.
So I, I agree with that, um, that we, um, Madam Chair, that we take out, on the, on the condition that we take out the screening along, along the north.
Okay.
Uh, which is along the north, and, um, but the south, the south edge remain.
Okay.
So I, I would agree with that, um.
Okay, so all in favor? Your application's approved with that condition.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back, number eight, 110 Glendale, are they back, is the agent here? Okay, number 10, 31 Hilton Avenue. Committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter, including one photograph of the neighborhood contacts from, um, Li Hua Zhao and Yong Shin Chen, the applicants and correspondents from Helen Zeng, the agent, um, email correspondence from the Assistant Planner, Community Planning, Toronto and East York District, uh, the Acting Coordinator, Right-of-Way Management Transportation Services, correspondence and support from 35, 33, and 37 Hilton, correspondence in opposition from 29 Hilton Avenue, 42 Austin Terrace, 63 Hilton, 27 Hilton, and 25 Hilton. Can we have your name and address, please, for the record?
Xin Yi Liu, address 207 Drury Avenue, Los York.
207?
207.
Drury, Drury, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, committee members, do you need a presentation, or can we proceed to questions? Okay, so proceed to questions then?
Mr. Liu, um, the parking, you have parking at the, at the front yard, you have a front yard parking?
No, we have parking and built a new one at the rear.
At the rear?
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, so you took that out and no parking to the rear, okay.
So from an FSI perspective, is, uh, can you, um, is that comparable to other properties? So from an FSI perspective, can you, is that comparable to other properties in the neighborhood?
Yes. We have extended our line depths to same as 33, same depths.
Yeah, okay.
Because FSI have increased quite a bit in this request. When you added, you're adding the new units at the back, there's, you're adding 96.76 meters square, square meters.
Yes.
And above your 218 square meters. I'm just trying to figure, in that neighborhood, how does yours fit?
What do you mean?
How does your increase fit with the rest of the neighborhood?
Neighborhood, we have a same line now with the right-hand side, 33 Hilton. So we extend the same length.
So your depth looks like it's gonna go beyond the neighbors?
No.
Just slightly?
It's same, only back deck beyond, but the wall is same.
But the others on the street are deeper than what you're proposing, from the materials that we've reviewed here would suggest that. Is that correct?
It's longer than the right-hand side, left-hand side, 29 is longer, but 33 is same.
In terms of the size of the homes, you're submitting that the size of your home is comparable to your neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
33 is comparable. So number 33 is what you're looking at, the size of number 33?
Yes.
It's a big house than what you have now?
Similar, same depths.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. We're in committee, discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, there are a lot of additions in this area, and many of them are at least as long as what's being proposed, some may perhaps a little bit longer. I know that the neighbor at 33 is in support, number 29 is not. There's a bit of, there's objectors and there's supporters. Based on the information that we have, I don't feel that this proposal is out of character for this neighborhood. The transportation issue regarding the parking has been resolved by the applicant. They've moved the spot to the rear, so I would be comfortable moving approval of the application.
Okay. Is there a seconder?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you so much.
Number 12, 207 Perth Avenue. The committee has before a copy of plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, six renderings of the proposed property, correspondence from the agent, correspondence sent to the owner of 152 Simmington Avenue from the agent, correspondence from the Assistant Planner, Community Planning, City Planning, Toronto and Eastern District, staff reports from the Manager Development Engineering, Engineering and Construction Services, Toronto and Eastern District, the Acting Supervisor, Tree Protection and Plan Review, Urban Forestry, report from the Coordinator, Material Recycling and Reduction, Solid Waste Management, form letters and support from 206 Perth Avenue, and correspondence and opposition from 152 Simmington Avenue. Could we have your name and address, please?
Madam Chair, my name is Brendan Charters from Eurodale Developments, pardon me, and I'm agent for the owner.
Thank you. Committee members, do you need a presentation or would you like to proceed to questions?
Questions.
Questions, okay. Any questions then, please?
In terms of the design, is there anything you can point to that's similar in the area?
Well, it's obviously a reasonably unique development now that we have a laneway suite under the new laneway bylaws. We have an existing triplex that is legal non-conforming that we are looking to convert into a fire-protected, properly delineated fourplex with a separate laneway suite. There are many multiplexes up and down Perth Avenue, basement walkouts, as we had the first file here as well, to the front entrance, and we are looking to clean up a condition to make safe, affordable housing at this location.
Does the laneway suite have anything to do with the decreasing soft landscaping that is required?
Fair question. Actually, the existing softscaping is being improved. We spoke with the local planning representative. You should have communication in the file to that respect. They have no objections with what we're doing.
What are you, what's your improvement? We have 30%.
Sorry, just let me pull the, that is variance. Variance two. So we have 30% current, or sorry, we're proposing 30%. We are under 20% currently. I have some photos of the rear yard if you would like to see what the existing condition is. It is concrete, a mixture of concrete and asphalt hardscape currently between the garage and the existing deck.
You're going to change that to 30%?
We are, to get closer to the requested differential under the laneway housing bylaw. And planning has reviewed that and is in support of it, based on their memo. I know there's a lot of correspondence on this file, but I do have an email from planning that says it is minor and that they have no issue with the application.
Chair, was there something in engineering for this one?
Yes, yes.
Conditions.
Conditions, okay, separation, okay.
With respect to engineering, we have been in communication with Avi Bishar up until so far as yesterday. So initially, they requested something which is more than required under the bylaw with respect to private servicing. So the bylaw states private servicing for the laneway suite needs to come from the principal dwelling. So that is a condition of the bylaw. We are not trying to circumvent that in any way. His request was that we have an engineered servicing plan, and we have requested the purpose of that since it is a bylaw requirement, and he has conceded that in an email, which you should have in the file, that we are okay to just add that to the site plan, the architectural site plan, which will be provided at the building permit stage. So the conditions with respect to engineering initially was requesting an engineering site servicing plan, now just requesting notations on the architectural site plan with respect to private servicing, given the bylaw speaks to that need.
How would you, we just solid waste matter?
That has been dealt with. So that was an initial comment from Waste Management Services, and they requested that we supply a bin, a waste container bin at the backside of the laneway suite, which we have provided and you would see on the site plan.
My questions, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Okay, we're in committee then, discussion or motion?
Chair, I'm prepared to move motion for approval of this application, subject to any requirements of planning and engineering. He has resolved the issue of waste management, solid waste management, and subject to urban forestry, condition number two.
I would be prepared to second the motion, but I'd be more comfortable, Mr. Russell, just to include the conditions in the engineering report, because they can determine amongst themselves how they satisfy the condition, so.
Engineering is.
Yeah, the Mace, Macex report. If you're okay with that, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, engineering is required.
The Macex report, yeah, and then it's forestry number two.
Number two.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Your application with those conditions is approved.
Thank you kindly.
Is the agent or applicant for 110 Glendale in the room?
Yes, Chair.
What number is that?
That was number eight.
Eight.
That was number 12. We're going back to number eight. Now, we wondered where you went. We called you a couple times.
I was outside, sorry.
Okay, so the committee has before a copy of plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, correspondence from the Assistant Planner, Community Planning, City Planning, Toronto and Eastern District, and a staff report from the Director of Community Planning, Toronto and Eastern District. Can we have your name and address for the record, please, sir?
My name is Karen Randall. The address is 110 Glendale Avenue.
Thank you. Committee members, do you need a presentation or do you want to proceed to questions?
No questions.
Okay, any questions then?
I mean, I, you're replacing an existing addition, just making it a bit larger. I really don't have any questions. If Mr. Russell has none, I'm.
Are you on the same footprint?
We are extending 600 millimeters further than the existing footprint, so essentially we're demolishing a portion of the building which is substandard, and we're rebuilding it to accommodate for a more cohesive layout, and we're only going essentially two feet further than the existing.
This is two point, you're gonna, you have a building depth of an extra 2.2, 2%, 2.2 meters?
Yes, but, yes, in comparison to the 17 building depth, which is the bylaw, yes. The existing is 18.6 meters, and we're proposing 19.22. And we got to that depth by averaging from the adjacent properties, which are all beyond this building depth, to make, I know this is typically done on the frontages. I use that same rationale to define the back, so this way it's in sync with its adjacent edifications.
Okay, any other questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we're in committee, discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, I think this application is indeed minor. There are a lot of additions. This is totally in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I would move approval, including the condition in the planning report dated May 8th regarding the second-story deck review. Do you have a seconder? Have you seen this report? Sorry, can we just?
Um, they.
Basically, what they're asking is that the rear second-story deck must be constructed and maintained with permanent landscape screening or opaque privacy screening along the north and south edges of the deck to a minimum height of 1.5 meters. So it's screening for the deck, that's all.
Have you seen, have you seen the report?
I had not. Is that?
Could you please give?
I would love to have a copy of that, and yes, we will do that, no problem.
Okay, so that's my motion, Madam Chair.
I just want him to read the report before I second the motion, Madam Chair.
I thought I just read it.
You satisfied?
You're okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with this. We'll put a screen in the second-story deck.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor? So your application's approved, subject to that condition?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, we're going to number 15, 117 Blackthorn Avenue. The committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Bruno Lobch, and I'm the agent for the owner, and the address is 117 Blackthorn Avenue.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation or proceed to questions?
No, Madam Chair, I think this is a truly minor application, and I would like to move for approval if my friend didn't have something.
I don't, I agree.
Okay, so I move for approval, that will meet the four tests and the criteria of neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Your application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number 16, 120 Humbercrest Boulevard. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, correspondence from Keith and Alicia Joel, the applicants, staff report from the Supervisor, Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, Urban Forestry, report from Planner, Toronto and Region Conservation Authority, eight form letters and support signed by owners or occupants of 114, 116, 130, 132, 134, 135, 143 and 145 Humbercrest Boulevard, a letter of interest from 118 Humbercrest Boulevard, and a letter of opposition from 118 Humbercrest. Could we have your name and address, please, sir?
My name is Jonathan Hatch, 120 Humbercrest Boulevard.
I'm going to ask for presentation, Madam Chair.
That's fine. Okay, please proceed your presentation.
So we're requesting five variances. Two are technical in nature in relation to the TRCA setbacks. The first variance is for the sideyard setback of the ground floor deck. We're asking point four-three in lieu of 1.2 for the north lot line. This deck is proposed to be in line with the existing house, so we're seeking to maintain the existing setback of point four-three. Variance two is similar in that the eaves are at a zero setback on the existing house, and we're also, that's variance two, and we're seeking to maintain the same setback so that we can have a continuous hip roof across that north side. In regards to variance three, this is for a GFA, we're asking for a point eight in lieu of point six. This has been designed at the rear of the dwelling, there's no impact to the street. In our research, we found applications ranging, that were approved at committee between point seven-nine to 1.16. We fall within the standard at point eight. This is also a very deep lot in that the reason why we have a larger GFA than normal is because there is a top of bank, and we have to deduct a large portion of the calculation from our GFA, so that's why the inflated number. Otherwise, our lot would be 483.24 instead of 220, in which case we would fall within the bylaw. Variances four and five are in relation to the TRCA, but as you can see from the report, we already have approval from them because we sought their approval in advance, and we submitted our geotechnical reports, so they have no issues with the setback into the long-term top of slope. We have spoken to the northern and southern neighbors, and we have eight letters of support. You'll also notice that there was opposition from the southern neighbor. It was mostly in relation to privacy issues for a window in a deck. We've since agreed to remove the offending window, which is on the master bedroom on the south face, and they have now changed their opposition to support with this change, and we are happy to do so.
The TRCA setback, they have no objection, although you're moving from setback which is normally required up 10 meters, and you're moving to 2.73 meters?
Yes.
And so they're quite okay with that?
Yes. I mean, the reason for it is that they don't want the building, obviously, to go into the ravine. However, we've shown with our geotechnical reports that there's no issue in terms of stability in the way that we've designed it, and in terms of where the long-term top of slope is, so they had no objections to it.
So did you amend your plans with respect to that window, or is it just a verbal?
It was, we do have amended plans, but at this point, we haven't agreed on the exterior finish, so we were hoping to just add this as a condition of no southern window on the south face. If necessary, we can submit an elevation to support this.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We're in committee, discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that, again, this proposal meets the four tests. It's in keeping with what's in the neighborhood. I would be prepared to move approval of the application with the condition that the window be removed on the south side. Is there one of the drawings I can reference to?
It would be. It would be page 12 on our plans.
Is it the second floor one?
It's the second floor, south-facing, yes. It's right above the deck.
You're moving offending window. Okay, you show us a new.
Proposed south elevation drawing shows it, right?
Yep.
Yeah, he's gonna say that.
So the outermost window on the.
Okay, so this south elevation drawing, they're not numbered, the drawings. Sheet number four, does that make sense?
The window question is this one right here.
Yeah, I have it, so.
On, she's in 12.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. 12?
12.
Sheet 12, okay, sheet 12.
Right, yeah, okay.
So sheet 12.
Do you have a seconder? Hey, do you have a seconder?
Sure.
Yeah, actually, that'd be good.
But he was... He was...
At this point, we're trying to keep the application flexible in case... Because we're still the northern and southern neighbors, there's discussions of what finishes are gonna go on the...
Well, this is more with respect to just the window placement?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we've had discussions with examiners before where they've essentially, if you tie it to the plans, it has to be exactly the same.
But if it's removal of the...
I mean, it's just the window is not a variance, so that's why...
Yeah.
It would just be nice if it was just...
Did you have a better way for me to word it? Put it in here?
Good question.
That it's not going to impede your building permit?
If... Could I submit this? We have a planer elevation that we could submit to the committee.
Can we see it?
We see it?
Yep.
Let's see on the overhead.
Actually, just...
Oh, like...
Oh, actually, look, they have a little cloud around it. Does that... Okay, that could work.
Does that address privacy?
Yeah. That addresses the window in question.
They're removing that.
So if we... Well, the motion would be to tie it to the south elevation submitted to the committee today at the meeting.
And this will address all privacy concerns?
Right.
The southern neighbor had privacy concerns.
Okay, so... Okay, that would be my motion, Madam Chair.
What is the motion?
The motion is to approve it and to tie it to the south elevation submitted to the committee today. That shows the window. That shows the window that is going to be removed.
Well, and tied to the private concerns if you...
That's what...
That's what that is.
Yeah, but I need the word in there, privacy. Okay. Madam Chair, I'm prepared to second the motion in as far as it addresses the concerns of the neighborhood and the privacy issues and the concerns of the neighborhood.
Okay. It's only number 118 that had a privacy issue, so it's the neighbor at number 118.
Yeah.
So it's tying it to the plan. The motion is to tie it to the plan submitted today that shows the removal of the window that 118 objected to. You're fine with that? The plan has a... Shows remove window.
Yeah, he's going to discuss with the neighbors, and he's going... And the whole discussion is about privacy.
But that's...
Yes, yeah, and that window...
That's why I want the word privacy in there.
Oh, I mean, there's... Yeah, I mean, the window's removed.
Okay. I don't know how it...
All right, so the motion is to approve the application, to tie it to the south elevation received by the committee today, May 15th, that addresses the privacy concern of the neighbor at 118 related to the southern window.
Okay, you second that, Mr. Russell?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Your application's approved on that condition.
Thank you.
Item number 18, 364 Gilbert Avenue. Committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Two renderings of the existing building and the proposed design. Cover letter from the agent, which include a site plan, three location maps illustrating similar variance approvals, previous decisions of the committee of adjustment affecting properties at 468 Gilbert, 351 Silverthorn, and 3 Failsworth Avenue. Correspondence from the agent, email correspondence from the Assistant Planner, Community Planning, City Planning, and Topical York District. The Planner, Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, Urban Forestry. Staff reports from the Manager, Permits and Enforcement, Parking, Transportation Services. The Supervisor of Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, and correspondence in concern or interest from 329 Gilbert Avenue. Can we please have your name, please, and your address?
May Sakider. Address, 3461 Dixie Road.
Sorry, what's your name again?
May Sakider.
So you're the agent, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, there you go, okay. Thank you. Committee members, do you need a presentation or would you like to proceed to questions?
Are you aware of the planning or... I'm sorry, the transportation report?
Yes, we received this report, and we are going to submit an application for license, commercial license, for the parking fronting the Gilbert Boulevard. We are going to do this today.
Okay.
Yeah. There is space in the front yard for two parking spaces. It could fit three cars, but actually, for standard parking, it could fit two cars. Yeah.
Okay.
Which part of your application is before the tribunal, Appeal Tribunal at the moment?
Tribunal?
Yeah, yeah. Do you have a... Is this a matter before the Appeal Tribunal?
No, there's no tribunal as far as number you want. For this application, no, there's no tribunal.
Are you on number 18?
Had you seen something wrong? I'm sorry.
I haven't...
I don't have that information. Those are the previous decisions.
There are a bunch of decisions in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then there's an application before... It's a different matter, that's the appeal.
Yeah, there was a previous decision.
There's an appeal, there's...
So any other questions? No, Madam Chair. Any other questions, Mr. Russell?
No.
Okay. Thank you. We're in committee discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that this proposal meets the four tests. I think the Art Design Center could work well in that neighborhood and in the context of the neighborhood. It's an industrial building. And I would be prepared to move approval, including the condition in the May 9th transportation report.
That one from Right-Away Management?
Correct. For the parking requirements that they have to apply for commercial parking spaces within the city boulevard, which they are doing today.
So that's May 9th?
Yeah, the May 9th report.
Do you have a seconder?
Yeah, I second it.
Transportation condition of May 9th.
We have a May 9th report of Right-Away Management.
All right. All in favor? Your application's approved with that condition.
Thank you.
Okay, item 19, 85 Clovely Avenue. The committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Staff report from the Manager, Permits and Enforcement, Parking, Transportation Services. 18 form letters in support, signed by the owners and occupants of 79, 80, 82, 83, 84, 86, 87, 89, 91, 92, 96, 101, 103, 105, and 107, Clovely Avenue, 106, 112, Booty Street, Booth Street, and 596 Oakwood Avenue. Your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name's Tony Diodati. I am the agent of the owner at 85 Clovely Avenue.
How do you spell your last name?
D-I-O-D-A-T-I.
Thank you. Committee members, do you need a presentation or would you like to proceed to questions?
Questions.
Okay, any questions?
Are you aware of the transportation report?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Would you like to see it?
Yes, please. Well, if I read this right, it's saying essentially to remove whatever is existing there.
A bin, yeah.
As a parking space and restore soft landscaping. Essentially, to render this dwelling with absolutely no parking, even though there is an existing parking space. Is that a correct reading?
Yep.
Well, we would request that whatever is... Naturally, we would request that whatever is existing, remain existing. It's a challenge...
They're saying that the site plan does not illustrate a parking space.
So the site plan... The challenge with the parking space issue is that we could potentially have the length of a parking space, but we don't have the proper width as per zoning.
Like, it goes on to say, if you look at the second-last paragraph on the report, it says, "Should the applicant amend and resubmit, transportation would not object to the variance because the parking space would be contained within the lot line."
So they didn't see a parking space on your drawing?
It's not on the drawings, and that's why they're saying it's obsolete, because you do need a variance for it?
So the... I do show a... An existing driveway to remain. And the issue with the... We do have a parking space length, proper length, we just don't have the existing width.
Right, so you would need a variance for it.
So that wasn't caught in your... The review? Where's the parking?
Well, it's...
All it says is existing driveway to remain.
I don't see...
Thank you.
Right, there was this...
I'm looking here and see... Like, I don't...
Where are you parking?
There's nothing saying a parking spot on the site plan, which is what transportation's saying. So because you didn't indicate the parking spot, it wouldn't have been reviewed by the zoning examiner. So it's deemed that you're not providing a parking spot, therefore, you have to relandscape it.
Well, I did have...
That's why variance number seven is there.
I did have a conversation with the zoning examiner and explained the situation that we basically have... What we have as a parking spot is existing, and it doesn't conform, right? And there's no way to alter it, because we're not essentially altering the front of the building.
Right, but again, if you wanted to have it, you have to have it on these plans. And then the zoning examiner would have indicated whether or not you needed the variance. And if he did, they would have told you what it was, and it would have been part of this submission.
Because the notice that went out even... It doesn't talk about a variance for a substandard-sized parking spot. It talks about no parking spaces being provided at all, and that's the variance you're requesting.
I mean, the committee does get applications for, you know, changes to the dimensions of parking spaces. So all... What I'm saying that... Well, what transportation's saying, it's not there, therefore, you're deemed not to want a parking spot, which is why that reports here.
And if you want a parking spot...
Well, we do in...
Some standard in size...
We do, yes.
You would need variance for that.
There would be a separate variance for that.
Well, now, you'd have to come back for it, because you then would have to come back for variance to allow a parking spot, plus if you say it's... The dimension's gonna be slightly different. There'd be variances for that, too, I guess. Or you could defer it and...
Yes, I suggest since you need the parking spot, and it seems like you really need a parking spot, if you ask for deferral in this matter, and then you come back within two, three to six months and get your parking spot, yeah?
Yes, I would rather not defer this, because the owners are avid transit users as well, and that's why they saw the restricted parking spot as... Or the substandard parking spot is not a huge impediment. For the sake of the whole application, I would like to proceed, and I could deal with the... We can deal with the parking spot as a separate...
As long as you understand you get no parking spot approved now, so that's how the building permits and everything.
Because that condition would be attached to approval.
Understood, but understood.
Okay.
Difficulty is that the inspector turns up when you're parking there later on to say that here you're parking, and you're going to be charged for it when it's not existing after our decision.
Is it possible to show the existing parking spot now?
No, because we don't know what the variance is.
You're requesting a variance because it's a substandard size.
Right, but we don't determine what variances are. We only look at them, see whether they meet the test.
That's why my colleague's saying, is your... Do you want to proceed now with the application, or would you like to request a furlough, amend your documents, go back, have a new notice issued for... To basically remove the variance number seven you're requesting, but add an additional variance with respect to the size of the parking space, if that's what you're looking to retain?
So is it possible to remove the item seven altogether from this and continue with the rest of the app?
The thing is that...
No.
No.
So I would...
You can't, yeah.
I would not like to defer this.
Okay, that's your...
Deal with the parking as a separate issue at a later date.
It would be a new application.
Understood.
Okay, with another fee and...
Understood.
Okay, E for application.
I would rather not defer this...
Okay.
The whole dwelling over this one item.
Okay, that's your choice. Okay, committee members, any other questions?
No, I don't have any further questions.
Oh, sure. Mr. Russell, any other questions?
Your variance number two, you're seeking... Your length variance, you're seeking a length of 20.24, which is three meters more... 3.24 meters more than the required bylaw of 17 meters. How do you justify that?
Well, that was not the intent when we started planning, but we found that by setting the house back on the west side, it kind of pinched our allowable footprint, and it essentially made that dwelling longer. In doing that, we weren't overly concerned, because in relation to our neighbors, we are still well back from the neighbor to the west.
I need you to show me your setback, your length. Because of your length and the setback there, how does it fit in with the rest of the neighborhood? You have anything to show for that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
To adjust the length, the length, the setback, because your two-story goes back so far, I want to know what is there in the neighborhood at the back of the other buildings? Which one exists?
Well, to the west, the setback, the neighbors have a nine-meter setback. Ours is 13 meters. And then to the east, it's an 18-meter setback. We kind of... We pretty much fall in between the two neighbors, as an average, essentially.
So you're back further than number 83, but you're not back as far as 87?
Correct. We fall almost midway between the two.
Which...
Any other questions, panel members? Thank you. We're in committee discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. As you just mentioned, this house is situated sort of balanced between the two adjacent neighbors, who I know are both in support. This proposal, in my opinion, meets the four tests. Fits within the context of the neighborhood. There are several other homes that are about this length or longer. So this really, right now, is a much shorter home than any of the others in that block. So I would argue that this is going to be more in keeping with what's on the street. So I would move approval, including the May 9th transportation condition.
Report from Right-Away Management, is there?
Yes. Do you have a seconder?
As long as he understands that there is no parking, that he has no parking left, it would be sufficient.
Yeah, I think he understands that he's going to have to make an application for parking if they don't want to landscape it.
All in favor? Okay, the application's approved on that condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and then we'll be back to deal with the contested applications. We'll be back at 10 to 11.
I have 20, I think, one to... Okay. One, 15, neighbor, one of the... Oh, that one's... Yeah, number 36.
Number 20?
Number 20, number 36.
Okay.
Oh, you haven't finished it yet?
No, she was on the roll today, so I had to eat.
I'm just sorry.
I didn't get to eat my corn muffin, man.
Well, I'm trying to be efficient, although I was...
I just hope I can make it to the roll, because I'm going to have to make a plea to see if everyone will get this.
Well, let's hope, 20 to 11, let's hope. Okay, we're back in session. For those items that were held to allow for discussion, is there anybody who is asking for a deferral? I understand number 20, 34 Glen Air Road wishes to ask for a deferral? Okay, just a second then, sir. Who's for the applicant?
Right here.
Okay, I had understood that this was a joint deferral request, could you come forward, sir? Are you asking for a deferral, sir, on behalf of the applicant?
Well, actually, you're not asking for a deferral.
Okay.
No, I am asking for a deferral, I wrote about it...
No, I have, we have your letter on file. Can you just come up and state your name for the record, sir?
Yes.
Then, and you've had a chance to discuss outside? The applicant wants to proceed today, so we won't be granting a deferral. Have you had a chance to have a discussion?
We've had a chance, but there are too many issues that we need to examine and study, and that is one of the reasons for the, that we are requesting the deferral.
Okay, committee members?
This is just, this matter just came to our attention about the last two weeks.
That is the standard notice under the act?
Well, I appreciate that, but under these circumstances, we need more time. We have had several discussions with both the owner and the owner's agent, but that hasn't resulted in any, in any agreement yet. We are, we have been negotiating, and we wish to continue negotiating.
Okay, all right, thank you. Panel members, his name is, your name, sir, again?
Yes, my name is Ross Morrison. My wife and I...
He had written in.
Yes, and I did write in yesterday afternoon.
Okay, panel members?
So, Mr. Morrison, with regards to your request, you said there are too many, too many issues, what are the issues?
Well, one of the issues is with respect to this reduction of the side yard setback. Another issue is with respect to the size of the house and its extension all the way back.
Yes.
And there's also an issue with respect to the trees on the property. We have five very mature...
So we're not going to hear the merits of the case?
No, that's fine, I was just responding to a question.
Thank you.
Right.
So...
It's here from the owner, what I...
The owner has said that they're not, they're not requesting a deferral.
They're not, okay, but why, where's the owner?
He's right there.
Why is it, I want to ask the owner, why is it that they think it's necessary to move ahead rather than have a deferral?
Sorry, is that a question for me?
Yes.
Basically, deferring this, we've been waiting for several months to get to this hearing, and deferring it is going to delay this for five, six months, which the owner doesn't have, and also we listened to the neighbors, I think the merit of the complaints has basically nothing to do with this development, so we wish the panel to hear the case today.
May I just say, Madam Chair, I was speaking with someone in your offices, in the committee's offices, my understanding is that the matter can be rescheduled to a date in July at the latest, and I'm not asking for a lot of time, what we are asking for is an opportunity to examine and study and negotiate. We have been negotiating on at least three occasions over the last five to six days. So we're just, we're seeking additional time, it might result in a resolution of the matter, but to rush into it this much is really quite distressing, actually, if I must say so.
Could I just ask the agent, are you the owner of the property, or are you here?
No, I'm not the owner on the design.
The owners are right to come back.
Well, so, Madam Chair, I would like to stand it down, and I, when you come back, I would like you to tell me this, the resident here, the letter says that the owner of 34 has advised that she's not opposed to the request for an adjournment, so can you please contact the owner and, because I, because what you're saying conflicts with what the owner's saying here.
Indeed, within the time, between now and the time that you're going to hear the case, I will reach the owners and will ask for them, because this is not a letter written by the owner, I see, right?
No, it's not, but it's still here, so if you can please speak to the owner, and if the owner is in fact in agreement, I mean, they are neighbors, then perhaps the deferral could be prudent, like, the letters don't say what the issues are, so we really don't know, but if you can do that between now and the time we get to you, that would be great.
Sure, I will, just, at least I'm under the impression that if this case is going to be deferred, it's not going to be three or four weeks, it's almost impossible.
Months.
That's true, but I will indeed...
Yeah, you're last on the slate here, so we have a lot, so if you can let us know.
So that's a statement that Mr. Morrison made in his letter of May the 14th?
Sure.
That your client indicated they agreed, so if you could just clarify that with your client.
Sure, indeed, I will.
Okay, so we're going to stand the matter down until he has a chance to discuss it with his client?
Okay, well, we're going to stand it down anyway, then.
It's not deferred, it's just stood down until we get to the item again. Okay, number one, 37 De Forest Road. Is there parties in opposition that are remaining?
Yes.
Could you please come and sit to your left, or left here, please, and thank you? So while everyone's getting settled, I'm just going to indicate what the committee has before it, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, staff report from the Director of Community Planning at Topical York District, correspondence in concern or interest from 39 De Forest Road, and correspondence in opposition from 70 Barrisford, 97 Barrisford, 33 De Forest, and, or two letters from 33 De Forest. So can we have your name and address, please, sir?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of committee, my name is T.J. Secura, I am a registered professional planner and principal of Design Plan Services, here with the owner today to present information on this application to you.
So please proceed with your presentation.
Madam Chair, the first thing I'm going to ask the committee to do is consider revising the application. The public hearing notice in front of you, variance number one, so these revisions have come as a result of discussions with the neighbors. They have indicated outside the chambers today, these revisions don't go far enough, but I would like to present the revisions to you and have the committee consider...
Okay, please go through those then.
So variance number one, the maximum permitted height of a side exterior main wall facing a side lot line is seven meters, the new height will be 7.9, as opposed to 8.18, which was on the notice, and I do have plans reflecting those changes, and a revised zoning notice was submitted electronically to committee staff late yesterday, they have indicated this morning, it will be uploaded today, but it is not uploaded as of me standing here right now. I will hand you those plans in a moment. Variance number three, the maximum permitted floor space index is .6 times the area of the lot, the floor space index will be 0.96 times the area of the lot, and in brackets, it would be 184.6 square meters. So I can hand you up a set of plans.
So those are the two changes?
Those are the two changes.
Okay.
And this was submitted electronically, so they are on file with the committee as of today.
Okay, so this is your only copy? Okay, so you could put, as you're presenting then, if you can... Okay, so you could put, as you're presenting then, if you can put what you'd like to refer to up on the projector behind you?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing I'm just going to show you with regards to those changes... Just because the color is a little bit difficult to see. The green is the revised proposal. The blue and the hatched area is the original proposal. So, the height has been dropped, and the left side is the front of the dwelling. The second and third story have been pulled back, and the second and third story and the main wall of the dwelling now align with, you can see the notation at the top, the existing front wall of the existing dwelling on the property. The variance for front yard setback still remains, because you can see that lower part in green, that would be the garage on the main floor. These drawings were all, sorry, not this drawing, but the drawings that you have in front of you and which were uploaded today also have been shared with the neighbors by the owner of the property on May 8th, and they acknowledged outside in the hallway that they had seen those plans. So, DeForest Road is a dead end road running towards Hyde Park east from Windmere to the dead end. The subject property is on the south side, just east of Beresford Avenue. The proposal is for addition to the existing single detached dwelling. Through discussions with planning staff and the neighbors, these revisions have been provided in front of you. I just wanted to note with regards to the side yard setback, the side yard setback on the west side is existing, and the side yard setback abutting, on the abutting dwelling at number 39 is .25 meters. So, there's already a reduced side yard on that side. I have also in front of, can put in front of you, letters of support. Five letters of support.
Okay. Says it from 4138, 10, 11, and 131 Beresford, okay?
From adjacent neighbors. There is one additional letter of support that has been sent electronically this morning to the owner, but we do not have a copy of that to give up to the committee. We'll be happy to upload that after today.
Okay.
I would note that in the staff report, they have raised some concerns. They did acknowledge that revisions have been made. The only concerns remaining from planning are the inclusion of the integral garage and the location of the main floor. There are no variances pertaining to an integral garage, or sorry, if this lot was at 7.5 meters or 7.6, which is required by the bylaw, there would be no variance pertaining to the garages through the front wall of the dwelling. It is only because this lot is a substandard lot as it exists that a variance arises for a garage entering through the front wall of the dwelling. The owners can't do anything about the width of the lot, but they would like to have a garage on their property, which does exist in the area. I would also note that this is a positive attribute of a proposal to get vehicles off of the street.
We're over five minutes, so if we can...
Okay, and then the last thing I would just advise you is... This is a map showing the existing, or sorry, the subject property and other variances that have been granted in the neighborhood reflected on this chart. I have two copies.
Thanks. So, anything specific here you wish to draw our attention to?
It's just to show you that there are many, many variances. You can see the FSI column, many variances for FSI on this property, for front yard setback. I would just note that the average FSI, it's noted at the bottom of the table, the average FSI of approvals in the area is .83 times the lot area, and the highest is 1.25 times the lot area. Given the time, Madam Chair, that concludes my comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Any questions at this time, or do you want, wish to hear from the other peoples first? Okay, you can stand down, we'll hear from the residents, and then we'll hear back from you.
My name is Jessica Patterson, and I reside at 35 DeForest.
My name is Jason Healy, and my parents reside at 39 DeForest.
Okay, are you speaking separately?
Yes.
Okay.
But we won't take longer than five minutes collectively.
Okay, so Jessica, one...
First, I'd like to present you with 47 signatures of nearby neighbors opposing development I'd also like to start by saying that we actually welcome renovation of this property. It's been neglected for the last two years, so it does need work. We're not here to oppose that. We are here to oppose the particular plans being presented. We have various concerns that I'll go through as quickly as possible. Just to note, the plans that you received, that you just received from the agent for the owner, we never received those. We were made aware of the number changes only to variances one, two, and three, and that was made by email by the owner, and we rejected those. So, there were no discuss, we haven't actually discussed this with the owner. We believe it was when the planning group rejected the variances, rejected the proposal. The timing seemed to align more with that. We didn't have any discussions with him. We, our objection to variance one is based on the height of the exterior walls. You have the latest proposal in front of you. We're concerned with the unusual height. We, we think that it may affect chimney draw at our dwelling at 35 DeForest. Variance two, the front yard setback, it is still not within the bylaw, even though they have agreed to bring everything except the garage to, to, to the original existing wall. There's no precedent in our neighborhood in terms of the street envelope for a front garage at ground. In terms of variance three, the floor space index, this is probably the variance that we're most concerned about. It's, the maximum for the area, as you know, is .3. They came back with a proposal for .96. The density is just far beyond what is typical in the neighborhood. We're also concerned about drainage. We don't have great drainage in our area. I'm not sure if the owner would know that, because we've never actually seen him around, but it could impact the drainage. There has been flooding in, at 37 DeForest before with the previous owner. That previous owner, who also rented it, addressed it right away, but it is a concern for the area, particularly with the current climate. The overhang of the shared drive on the second floor is a violation of the aerial right-of-way, but it's also a fire hazard due to the proximity to 35 DeForest, which is my home. And the whole purpose, our understanding of the purpose of the density of the lot is to make sure it fits. This property doesn't fit with the density of the lot. The other variances, the soft landscaping, there's nothing consistent with that in the neighborhood that draw, they're proposing 56%. The bylaw, as you know, is 75%. I've already discussed the garage. Okay, and is there anything you wanted to add, Jason?
No, I think that basically covers like all the concerns I had as well. I'd just like to, there was other notes from other neighbors with concerns. I think we have sort of grouped together and...
Okay, so Jessica, you're finished?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I have one image to show you, if that's okay.
Okay, you're going to do it jointly?
Okay. We can do it jointly.
Yeah, sir.
No, it's okay, okay. So, it's just I wanted to make sure you both have your time, but, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, so, just like I said, essentially, she covered all the things that I was wanting to say as well. And also, I'd just like to reference the city planning report, which has sort of requested that this proposal be refused based on the four tests that they have. These variances are not minor in nature, they're anything but. I'd say there's a, this is not desirable for public interest in the neighborhood. The general intent and purpose in terms of space, density, air rights, privacy, sunshine will all be affected. It'll have a negative impact on neighbors psychologically, the value of adjacent properties. So, if I could just quote from the report?
We have it in front of us.
Okay, sorry, then, that's, I just wanted to make sure that, the cumulative variances for this lot size are just not consistent with anything in the area, and it will just impact the sort of nature and intent of the neighborhood.
Just to the report, the, the main issue is the integral garage. Now, the agent stated that there, there's a lot of them. Is that in fact the case?
Not, not at ground level, like the, the first floor, I believe, would be above the garage, and that's not consistent with anything in the neighborhood. Furthermore, like, so this garage, I know it's hard to visualize, but this house, there's a shared driveway that runs between the two houses, so the garage would, there would be no straight line point of access from the street to this garage. You would need to turn, sort of at an angle, and then turn angle into the garage, so that, again, is not consistent with anything in the neighborhood.
So, basically, you are in agreement with staff that this is not the prevailing character in the neighborhood?
Yes.
And this would introduce something totally different from the street?
Correct.
Okay, you had a picture show?
Yeah. So, this is obviously a digital rendering, but it is the, the, sorry, the dimensions are accurate. So, this is just a view from our backyard to the neighboring 37 DeForest, so you can just see how it will impact the character of the neighborhood, and also our visibility and our connection to our neighbors. Just wanted to show you that.
The same thing for 39 DeForest Road, obviously, that's on the other side looking this way, but there's a deck in the backyard of that location, which ends just before the garage in the picture. So, essentially, this, just this height and this density just puts up a wall along that deck, and the proximity to the property line is so close that I could reach out and touch that house from the deck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, would you like to come up and respond, please, to the issues that have been raised?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you a series of images. One of the comments made by the residents was that there are no dwellings in this neighborhood with integral garages at the grade, with floor space above them. So, I'm going to show you a series of images on the, on the photo. I'm just going to flip through them, and you can see that there are several examples.
So, what's the address of this property?
I apologize, I did not correlate these to addresses. I just photographed them, they're in, they're in the same study area that was provided to you with the variance research, the map that I put up before. So, they're within the neighborhood with this, the same neighborhood that this house exists in.
What's the study area here? 60 meters that you did for this? Did you do 60?
That area outlined in green.
And how, what's the...
I can leave that with you.
What's the...
It's, it's an amalgamation of research requests in the area, so we had to do 500 meters at a few different points.
So, this is 500 meters?
Roughly 500 meters with some harder boundaries.
Okay. So, the yellow is what?
So, yellow are locations for which we have found variances, and some of them would correspond to these photos that I'm showing you. I apologize, I did not correlate those lists with these photos, but these photos are in that same area.
Okay.
So, you can see, just within walking distance of the subject property, these houses exist.
Do you know what the statistics are on those properties, like, you know, relative to the variances you're requesting, FSI and height, or is there other...
I, I don't, Madam Chair, because I would have to know the frontage of each one of those individual lots, because whether there was a variance related to a garage through the front wall would only came, come into place if there was a frontage less than 7.5 meters in width. So, if there was no frontage variance, I would not know what the frontage of those lots was, even if I had done the research.
The FSI's, the wall heights, all the variances you're requesting, sorry.
Yeah, so in the chart that I provided you, it's a comprehensive list of all the variances in the neighborhood pertaining to FSI, wall heights.
Okay, those pictures you just showed us?
Yes.
Can you link those to, because you don't have the addresses?
No, that's what I said to you. I did not correlate those photos with that research request.
Do you know if any of them are on our little map here, either, like, are any of those houses you showed us on DeForest Road either in the block we're talking about, or the, the next block in either direction?
So, I'm not sure, when you say "our little map," I'm not sure which one you're referring to?
This, this map here.
Or the public notification map?
Correct. So, so basically, we're talking three blocks on DeForest. Are any of those examples on DeForest?
So, the owner's here, and he can give some addresses of these specific locations.
Okay, can we have your name, please, sir?
This is Mr. Ali Kashani, and he, he's working with the owner, he's building it for the owner, who is here in the audience as well.
41 what?
41 Beresford.
Where's that? Oh, oh, here. That's not even in our, in our notification area.
So, this is 41 Beresford, okay.
Number 15 Beresford.
Okay.
This one is Dory, 47 Dory.
Dory?
Dory.
47?
You can see the number right on the front of the house. This one is Morningside, and the frontage is 22.
Okay, Morningside isn't on this map, okay?
Between Dory and Morningside, I think.
Okay, so these, these...
Both of them would have, both of these photos would have variances for the garage.
Like, there's a yellow marker on number 20 DeForest.
What are you trying to demonstrate us, to us there?
That there is a corresponding variance in the chart that I provided.
But not an integral garage, correct?
No, not if it was above 7.5 meters in width.
So, there's nothing on DeForest, basically.
There are no variances for this on DeForest. There are two dwellings on DeForest with garages with living space above them.
Okay, just a second, please.
The other, those were the photos and the neighborhood research we did. With regards to the other comments that were made, with regards to drainage and flooding, obviously, a grading plan would have to be submitted as part of the building permit application, and that grading plan would demonstrate that there is no change to the drainage on any adjacent property. With regards to the, density doesn't fit in the neighborhood, this is for a 1,900 square foot lot. The research that I provided to you shows you a range of up to 1.25 times FSI, and so this proposal fits within that range, and the FSI was reduced to try and address some of the concerns that were raised. With regards to the landscaping, that it's not enough, you can see that on many of those photos, the landscaping is, there is not much landscaping in the front, particularly on the narrower lots, of which this subject lot is only 6.64 meters in width. So, it is substantially smaller than what the zoning bylaw permits, but it exists as of right, and therefore, there's a constraint on this lot that wouldn't exist on other similar proposals in the area. With regards to an angled garage and a awkward way of accessing the property, I do not know what that refers to. The driveway is straight into the garage. There is no angle, there is no bend, there is nothing other than a straight driveway proposed into the garage. And with regards to the photo of the rear addition that the owner's provided to you, oh, sorry, first of all, the front setback, they said it's not in line. I've highlighted in blue, or I've, I've kind of bolded in blue, the existing front yards of the dwellings on either side. So, you can see at number 39, this would be the front wall, and then porch, and at number 35, this would be the front wall, and porch.
So, how does the, how does the height compare to the two and a half story next door?
Well, the overall height of this dwelling complies with the zoning bylaw. It's only a sidewall height variance.
I understand that.
So, it's going to be roughly similar. We didn't do a comparison drawing. And the last, last comment I'll make was about the photo that was presented to you showing how the addition will project back into the rear yard. I have three comments to make on that. Number one, there are no variances for building length, building depth, or rear yard setback. Number two, the, whoever drew that drawing would not have had any CAD drawings or any accurate line work with regards to that, so I question the accuracy of that drawing and how they would know where that line would be if they had no accurate measurements with regards to the subject proposal on the property. Those are my comments. comments, and I'm happy to take any questions the committee may have.
Thank you. Um, any questions, committee members?
Just wanted to address, um, the drainage issues. How, how, how your plans, um, affect the drainage from the other neighbors across?
So there is an existing dwelling on this property, and this, these are only additions to that dwelling. So the drainage is going to remain largely unchanged, and in addition to that, the building department will require a grading and drainage plan that will demonstrate that there is no change to the drainage at the property lines being affected by any of these additions.
What about the, the overhang? And we have overhang issue that drops over, um...
So there are two projections on the side of the dwelling from the, um, main, main floor of the dwelling. And those are above the ground, and they will not affect, there is a right-of-way down the side of this house between number 35 and number 37, and that right-of-way will remain open and unobstructed through this proposal, and no concerns have been raised from transportation staff or planning staff with regards to those overhangs or that right-of-way. It is being respected through this application.
So there seems to be, uh, according to the information you've given us, five, uh, properties on Beresford that are, have had approved the FSI you're requesting, or greater? Am I correct in that?
Yes. Beresford actually has the most variances in our research area, and almost all of them include, uh, an FSI. I see on Beresford 1.18, 1.01, .72, .94, .98, and you can see down the list.
What about main wall height? Any that have, am I reading this correctly, then, that you're suggesting that there's a number on Beresford that have main wall heights?
Yes. 10.26, 8.85, 8.72. Uh, there are two that were refused.
So those are wall heights, not heights?
Those are main wall heights, yes. We correspond the columns to the same variances that are being reflected in the subject application. You can also see that there are soft landscaping variances as well on Beresford.
Other questions, panel members?
Nope.
Any questions, Mr. Russell? Thank you very much. We're in committee. Discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, we've been presented with a lot of evidence in terms of the variances. However, um, I'm, I'm still not convinced on the integral garage and whether or not that fits within the context of, of the neighborhood. Um, I haven't really seen anything that indicates that they are prevalent on the street. Um, there've been examples, but based on looking at the map, they're not, they're not that close. And, um, so I'm somewhat torn. I, at this stage of the game, I, I'm inclined to agree with, uh, planning that cumulatively, despite the fact that the applicant has made some revisions, it still, um, doesn't address the, the main issue, which is the integral garage.
Yeah, I, I mean, when we look at the information that's presented from the, um, from the applicant, it doesn't seem to be the same degree of activity on DeForest as there is on some of the others, and I, it's the, the planning reports, um, the integral garage seems to be the primary issue that is, uh, remains a concern.
Madam Chair, I have heard both you and, um, and my colleague over the next side, and I want to put this one to rest. I'm, I don't believe that this application, um, meet the cumu- cumulative effect that is necessary, um, for, to address the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw as the planning report has set out, and I'm, I'm moving for
I'll, um, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Oh, as amended, yeah.
As amended.
Your application is refused.
Madam Chair, members of committee, thank you for your time.
Item number five, 452 Winnet, Avenue. Committee has before, copy of plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevation, staff report from the actus supervisor tree protection plan review, 10 signature petition and support, um, signed by owners of occupant, occupants of 442, 444, 445, 446, 450, 451, 454, 488 Winnet, and 523, 525 Atlas. Correspondence and opposition from 57 Gloucester, Gloucester Grove. Could we have your name, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Oh, opposition, I'm sorry. Could you please sit to the left here?
There, there was opposition. They have, they have left for the day. We did have, I have some discussions with them. My name is Joel Tanner, authorized representative, uh, 2B 97 James Street North, Hamilton, Ontario, and that's SMPL Design Studio. Uh, we had a very good discussion with the owners of 57 Gloucester, um, and they have decided to, to retreat on, on their, on their objection. Um, we had a very good discussion regarding the said proposal and their overall impact on, on our development on their, the neighboring property. Um, they had a better understanding once they were able to analyze the plans with us, um, and no longer seem to have any issues with said proposal.
So committee members, do you need a presentation, then, or would you like to proceed to questions?
Questions.
Okay, questions, then?
Variance, um, number two, and variance number three, um, you're seeking, uh, uh, to, to bring up your height from the required 8.5 meters to 10.2 meters. Um, what is your position on these two variances?
Yeah, absolutely. So it is a modern dwelling design. Uh, so we do have flat roofs, which is driving the main wall height up. We do not have sloped roof in our favor. Uh, there is a lot slope deviation on the front yard from center point front property line up to where the dwelling is going to reside. Uh, so there's a bit of a loss in allowable height, height variation there. Uh, what we've also done is we are approaching the committee with a proposal for a recent rental suite, uh, to increase densification on the street. Um, and because of that, we've actually lifted the home out of the ground in order to get larger, larger windows that aren't sitting in window wells for the occupants of the basement apartment. So that is another driver on the, um, on the additional height variance that we are requesting. Um, the family is currently a family of four, looking to grow to a family of five. And so the, the driver on the, the scale and the massing of the dwelling is to turn that third floor into a bit of a rec room because of the loss of the basement space for the rental apartment. Um, we had an initial proposal that we sent in, uh, for planning, uh, comments prior to going to committee of adjustment. Uh, we made some alterations to the plan, um, after direct coordination with the planning staff in order to get planning support. Um, we, uh, we essentially brought back that second floor rear, uh, rear wall location to be, uh, in line with the new property to the north. Um, and the, the planning staff were, were a little bit more in favor of, of playing with that third floor volume. So in retracting the second floor volume, um, we pushed, uh, the third floor volume more to the rear by about a meter and a half to two meters. Um, so again, all those changes were done in collaboration with the planning staff in order to gain their support on the proposal. Um, so those are some of the drivers on, on the variance request for the main wall height. There most certainly are, yeah. Yes, there's, there's quite a, there's quite a variance tolerance from house to house, and depending on whether it's a flat roof or a slope roof. Um, I do have, I'm just gonna pull up, um, um... So we were just pulling up, there was a few, but we were pulling up 232 Ava, which has the same type of situation, sitting at 10.8. We're sitting at 10.5. Um, so we are, when it comes to flat roof dwellings, there's a property about eight ou- eight, eight or 10 doors to the south, um, which is a three-story dwelling. It's step back, just like our development. Um, it's closer to the corner lot line, so it, it's running into the same situation, um, from a variance tolerance, um, as, as kind of how we've put forth our Uh, it's a full two-story, so it's probably sitting closer to about nine and a half meters. Yeah. Yeah, and it's a modern dwelling, so it's got, yeah.
How many others do you have at 10.2 meters?
In the surrounding area? This is Yanni, the owner of the property. So we just want to show a few of the surrounding, surrounding properties with... So again, this, this particular design style, which we're not after, is more of a traditional approach. So they've got, you know, they've got the advantage of being able to pull down the volume height, whereas for us, because we've got a full flat roof, we don't have that advantage. Um, so when you look at the overall massing, um, that front dormer is, you know, becomes very similar to what our front proposal is. Um, but again, because their roof lines are hugging the sides, it's a little bit of a deviation.
That's 521 Atlas?
We're sitting at, let's call it 32 feet, 31 feet. So which is in the range of about nine and a half meters.
So it's still less than?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So is there anything, as Mr. Russell was asking, anything you can point to that has the wall heights that you're requesting?
Yeah, so again, these are all three-story dwell, three-story dwellings. So... Not at that height, no, no. But again, it's, it is, uh, because they're all full three-story dwellings, as much as, you know, we'd like to think that we can, that's why we've stepped back that, not only the second floor volume from the front facade, but the third story volume. I'm just gonna put, uh, a higher resolution render of our proposed property up on.
And, um, I just want to make sure I'm correct. You said that was after discussion with planning?
A hundred percent, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, the planning staff didn't bring up any comments related to the height. They didn't have any concerns related to height. Their biggest concern was the overall massing of the property, uh, or sorry, of the home on the subject property and pulling back that rear facade. They, they were looking for consistency of that second floor massing to be more in line with...
And pulled back on the basis of your discussions?
A hundred percent, yes. So the official proposal in front of you was a, a secondary round that was put forth. We received a secondary, uh, zoning certificate that was then applied to, uh, to the variance application, which is the paperwork in front of you today.
So you wouldn't be able to, um, because it seems like mostly the, the variance there are 9.5 meters in height, where you wouldn't be able to address, to bring yours to within
It's not really legible in there. We've got the, uh, sorry, let me just go back to my gallery here. So we've got 232 Ava, and they are, again, allowable, uh, main walls at 8.5. They've proposed and received at a 10.8. Um, so that's in direct vicinity, which is...
So 232 Ava is 10.8, you're saying?
10.8, yeah. Yeah, so this is from... In terms of whether it's a flat roof...
Side wall height variance?
Yeah, let me, do you want me to...
Is it?
Nine walls, 8.5, 10.8.
And that was approved? And the result was?
So again, that's 0.3 above and beyond the proposed. I would, my argument would be that whether it's a flat roof or a slope roof, if they're, if they have a main wall sitting at, or a front wall or a main wall sitting at 10.8, and we're sitting at 10.5, the deviation factor there, they're building with a slope roof would even be taller. So...
Can you speak to the platform on the third story? How prevalent are they?
Yeah, the, um, we could easily look at privacy screens on the north and the side, sidewalls if required. Night, the, the...
What you're asking for, prevalence of the size you're requesting, you're asking for more than double the size of the, what the bylaw...
Yeah, that was a discussion. So originally, actually, we were closer to about 25 square meters. It was essentially that whole rooftop terrace. Discussions with planning, we basically pulled it down to that 9.54. If committee wants to amend that as an item on our proposal, we'd be open to that.
But how prevalent are they? Are there others? Are there, or not really, 'cause you're a flat roof and most are not flat?
That, that's the issue, yeah. You're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to take advantage of that balcony on, on a slope roof condition, and as, in as much of a form that you would be on a flat roof. So it's there, it's there to be taken advantage of. Yeah.
You can't bring, you can't bring your, your platform down further, because your, your other variances are so, so wide, and your platform is double the requirement, um, you want to address that issue, or you want to leave it the way it is?
We would be open to...
Yeah, it's not for, for us. Openness is not for us.
Yeah, we're open to basically a reduction of, uh, that third story balcony from, I think it's sitting at 9.54. Yeah, 9.54. We could, we can bring that down to two. Or sorry, to four. So maximum permitted area of each platform and/or above the second story of a detached house is four, four square meters.
You'd be removing the variance.
They remove the variance, then?
Yep, that's okay.
So you're, are you doing that?
Yep, we would like to, we would like to eliminate it.
Uh, remove the variance.
Uh, variance number eight.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, we're in committee. Discussion or motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I, um, I guess the, the difficulty I had was the exterior, uh, main walls and, um, um, the height in those, the various heights that we're seeking. Um, the, the other issue was, oh, um, can you get, get just a little bit of, of...
Okay, we'll come back to committee.
Yeah, yeah, the, the building length, um, you, you, are you staying with the building length of 21.2 meters?
Yeah, I'll put a side elevation up for you. This is what we're analyzing with the Gloucester neighbors. So the 21.2 is the, is the main floor only, and then the second story volume you're seeing has been pulled back to the 19. So second story is sitting at 19, first story is sitting at 21.2, and then further reduction on the third floor, standing closer to, to 17.
Um, do we need to, um, express that in, in the application, Madam Chair?
If the committee wasn't inclined to prove it, you could tie a total.
Yeah, and we'd be absolutely okay with that. We have no intent of, of growing that volume.
So, um, Madam Chair, um, the adjustments, um, although a little bit excessive in variance two, three, and four, um, seem to fit in with what's happening with the neighborhood. I, I really, I, I think this day he'll probably get away with me on that one. really, I, I think this day he will probably get away with me on that one, um, with regards to, to variance number, number five, um, I would tie it to plans where he is drawing back on the, the second and the third floor, and...
To plan A two dot O four?
Yes, and, um, variance number eight has been withdrawn, so it doesn't exist any longer, so, um, based on, um, that, um, the plan time to, to, is drawn to plans, and the variance number eight being withdrawn, and...
Two O two, I should be...
Yes, and, um, I would, I, I would move for, for approval of the application in that it's not excessive, and in, as amended, it's not in violate, in violation of the craft of the neighborhood, so it's within the city of Toronto zoning by law.
I'll, um, second that with four-street condition number one.
And we're tying, tying it to eight, drawing A two O two?
Tied to A two O two, yes, I'll read first, number one.
So I'll support the motion for the application as amended, tying it to the drawing four-street number one.
All in favor, your application's approved based on those conditions?
Thanks, everybody, I've agreed to.
Item number six, nine to eleven Madison Avenue, anyone's in opposition, could they please sit to the left, um, the committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from the agent, covering letter, uh, okay, covering letter from Peter Smith, the agent, covering letter from Michael Dorr, the agent, correspondence from the senior planner, community, planning, Toronto and East York District, from the Coordinator Engineering and Construction Services, Toronto and East York District, the Assistant Planner, Heritage Preservation Services, staff reports from the Manager Development Engineering, Engineering and Construction Services, Toronto and East York District, Acting Manager Traffic Planning Transportation Services, Program Manager Heritage Preservation Services, correspondence in concern or interest from the Annex Residence Association, correspondence in opposition from, um, Vinola Inol- uh, 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 Miss...
Vail.
Okay, thank you, all right, sure, um, Unit sixteen oh three-three Concord Place, can we please have your name and address, please, sir?
Good morning, thank you, uh, my name is Mike Dorr, spelled D-R-O-R, I'm a registered professional planner and an associate of Bowsports Incorporated, my address is three Church Street, Suite two hundred in Toronto.
Okay, so could we have a presentation, please, sir?
Thank you, uh, I would also want to mention that I'm here with, uh, the ownership group as well, and, uh, just wanna note that on the notice, as well as on the, uh, agenda today, the City of Toronto has listed as the, um, as the owner of the property, that is no longer the case, the City of Toronto disposed of the property through Bill Toronto, and, um, nine Madison was purchased by the International Estonian Center, while eleven...
International Swimming Center?
Estonian Center.
International Estonian Center, while, um, eleven Madison is, is owned by the Estonian Credit Union, so here today is Tina Livett from the Estonian Credit Union, and Veiko Parming from the International Estonian Center, as well as LR Congat, uh, the architect, in case there's any questions related to design specifically, and David Calm, who is the development manager for the, for the...
So this is here on a waiver, although you've gone through site plan, are going through site plan, okay, so...
Correct.
You're confident that the variances, as it are?
We are confident, thank you.
All right, please proceed.
So I'll, thank you, I'll start with the same, this is not your typical minor variance application, um, it's kind of an opportunity to create a, a modern new home for a cultural center, nonprofit cultural institution, uh, the Estonian Center in, uh, which is currently located in East, East York, by relocating it to one of the most transit-oriented and transit-supportive locations in the City of Toronto, uh, near Bluer and Spadina, it's an opportunity to do so while adding a significant new public square along Madison Avenue, uh, to the Annex Neighborhood, that will interface with Palmer Tell Park across the street, and, uh, if you look at the rendering up on the screen right now, it's rendering, rendering submitted to the application, you can see that public square, um, where the, uh, kind of orange leaf, leafy trees are in the center, and, uh, we're looking over and above Palmer Tell Park on the west side of Madison Avenue, um, this is also an opportunity to retain and reuse the existing building at eleven Madison Avenue, which is currently, uh, within the, um, Annex, um, Heritage Conservation District, um, that building will be, uh, conserved, uh, it will be attached to the proposed development, and its heritage values, attributes, and character, character will be maintained, uh, through the proposal. Uh, it's also an opportunity to redevelop a surface parking lot, locate the steps from both Spadina and Saint George subway stations, and to secure a new mid-block connection between Madison Avenue and Huron Street, through this site and through the building, uh, and connecting through the proposed development that's nearing approval at three hundred Bluer Street, um, West and four seventy-eight Huron, which is the building you can see behind us, um, uh, to the back, um, the development, generally speaking, has a, a great focus in public realm on place-making and significantly improving the existing condition, so, uh, we're seeking nine variances in total, uh, really it's only six, because, um, three of them are repeats between the two bylaws that are applied to the site, so I'll just quickly go through them, and I'll highlight the one that seems to have come up a lot in, um, in the letters submitted by, um, by the gentleman to my right, uh, as well as by, um, the, the ARA as well, the Annex Residence Association, so the, the variances, uh, which you have in front of you on notice are to reduce the amount of main wall, uh, which is to be within three meters of the, of the front, um, front lot line, from seventy-five percent to thirty percent, to twenty-nine percent, and the reason being that, uh, we're proposing a public square, as well as, um, retaining the heritage building, which can't be, uh, located closer to the lot line, we're proposing to reduce the seven point five meter, uh, rear-end setback from seven, uh, seven point five to zero, and that's been done in consultation with three hundred Bluer, um, and we've been coordinating with them the entire time in terms of how this development will tie into them, and they are located, um, basically on, on, to the top of the screen, um, to immediately to the, to the east of the development, further we're proposing a minor height increase from twelve to twelve point eight-five meters, and that's to account for some additional transfer slabs that were identified as being required through the site plan process, in order to reduce the amount of load, or reduce new loads on a subway infrastructure, which is located beneath the development, uh, and we're also proposing to reduce, uh, the first-floor height from three, four point five to three point two meters, uh, in order to allow for taller stories on the second and the third floor, which is where the Estonian Cultural Center will be located, while still providing retail, um, uh, and opportunities at grade, uh, finally, or not finally, the, the second last one was to, to add a restaurant and takeout restaurant and bank use on the eleven Ba- eleven Madison property, so those uses are per- are permitted today on Diet Madison, but are not, uh, permitted on the eleven Madison portion, we're proposing to extend the permission over to eleven Madison, and those will be located at a small, uh, the bank will be located a small, um, area at the back of the building, will function like an office, which is a permitted use, while in the front, uh, within the heritage building, we'll look, try to, um, provide some flexibility for additional uses, including, um, a potential restaurant and cafe-type use.
We're at five minutes.
And I'll just finish up by talking about the parking quickly, if I may?
Yep.
Uh, and, and the fact that it offers a lot of confusion about the parking, um, variance we're requesting, requesting a reduction from eighteen or nineteen spaces, depending on which bylaw you're, you're applying, down to zero spaces, um, the LMM parking study, which was submitted as, as part of the site plan application, did, uh, account for all of the requirements, um, requested by staff, and there was some confusion from, from, uh, transportation staff about what specific information was included, um, specifically they were looking for two items, which was whether the existing parking demand of the TPA lot on the site today was accounted for, it was, uh, they're also confused about whether the analysis took into account the loss of the parking, uh, parking spaces on the subject site, and, and it did, uh, those two items were made clear to Transportation Services staff following the submission of the application, and a revised parking memo was submitted to the committee and to, uh, planning staff, that's dated February fourth, twenty nineteen, and the, uh, expresses no objection to the parking variance, um, that was sent to the committee through, um, Ms. Kopapal in Transportation Services, in her email dated April twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, indicating that staff no longer have any concerns with the parking variance. And given the time, I think I'll, I'll end it there, and I'll have, have you to answer any more questions.
I don't think we have that email.
Yeah, I'm...
Oh, here it is.
It is on...
Did you say Gold Pappal?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, okay, I found it.
Yeah, so, to that email where she says...
Oh, there it is, okay, no longer applicable, yeah.
She attaches the revised, um, um, memo from Engineering and Construction Services, indicating that there's no more concerns of parking.
So, uh, so your parking is, where do you park?
Uh, there are no parking spaces proposed on site?
There's no, no parking space on site, where are you gonna park?
Sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah?
Can you, can you repeat the question, I, I didn't catch that.
Your park, there, there are no parking spaces on site, where will you park?
Um, the parking study prepared by LMM Engineering, uh, indicates, uh, that there are sufficient, uh, parking i- in the neighborhood, uh, in various lots in the area, uh, to accommodate the projected parking demand, I'm not a transportation expert, but from my understanding of the report and, um, uh, discussion with the consultant, they, uh, undertook a proxy study at the current Estonian Center, which is located on Broadview Avenue in East York, and they also, uh, did a number of studies, um, in the area itself, to figure out what the actual uptake of current parking lots are, and determined that there was sufficient capacity, uh, both in, in the peak hours on a weekday and the gours on, uh, on a weekend.
So are you entering into that agreement?
There is, uh, no proposed agreement at the moment, uh, there was a discussion at some point with, um, in terms of, uh, parking agreement with Tartu College, which, which is o- owned by the Estonian community, and is actually part of the ownership group of this site, but there is no agreement proposed right now, and staff are aware of that, and have no objection to that, uh, approach, um, should there be a agreement entered into in the future, that'll be subject to a, a different application, and, but the key is that there is no requirement for any of those spaces, um, both our, our consultant and city staff agree that there's no need to provide parking on site, and that the variances are , uh, supportable, the, uh, given location, um, a hundred meters from the Spadina subway station, about two hundred fifty meters from Saint George subway station, uh, a hundred meters or fifty meters from the Bluer cycle track, uh, forty-five meters or so from a, a bike share, uh, stop at the corner of Bluer and Madison, uh, within a walkable neighborhood, on two subway lines, and a streetcar line, five-ten Spadina's streetcar, I think, given all that, and Transportation Man Management Report provided by LMM, there's no expectation that, uh, parking will be required on the site.
Just curious, the TPA parking, where is it going, or is it...
Uh, it's on its closing, it was a declared surplus by the city.
So it's just a parking and loop thing that you guys have to...
Uh, yeah, it, it was accounted for in the study, so they took into account...
They're not replacing it?
Not, exactly, yeah.
So the memo from Development Engineering in December, not, you know, one from Transportation Services Division, has there been an update to that?
Right, and, and, uh, uh, LAR, I just mentioned to you that, um, part of the reason why we declared the, the, um, site surplus, uh, back in twenty-eleven, the city declared a surplus and transferred it to, uh, Bill Toronto, was the fact that the parking spaces were deemed to be expendable, and not necessary in the neighborhood, um, but, but in terms of your question regarding the ECS, um, memo, I don't believe that, that it has been updated as of yet, we've recently resubmitted for a site plan application, based on, on the, uh, plans that we have in front of you today, and an ECS memo will be updated accordingly, but I think the, there were no objections in that ECS memo aside from the, um, the ones related to parking variances?
So the conditions would still apply for the committee to attach, you're still working on it, finalizing?
Correct, yeah.
He doesn't have a document, that's the problem.
Sorry?
He doesn't have a document, uh, until they finish working on that agreement.
Right, but we, we still need to put in a, a condition...
Oh.
From the Development Engineering?
From Engineering, and then...
They, they suggested two conditions, memo of December, the fourteenth...
Transportation portion of that report was updated, so the February...
I'm talking about the Feb ninth, I'm talking about the Feb fourth report.
Yeah, so the Feb fourth report, let me just, uh, flip to it quickly.
The, uh, engineering, and, no, the engineering...
So that there are no, uh, conditions requested from a, related to parking, unless I'm missing...
Right, this is a, this is the February eighth one from Engineering and Construction, and then the other one is about the parking, which I think was a joint one, I mean, I think that's a different, that's the one, December fourteenth, that's no longer relevant, correct?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, we're...
When I do my presentation, I'll be addressing the...
That's fine, okay. All right.
As well as the presentation.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions of the applicant at this time? Okay, so we'll hear...
I may just note that there are, there are no conditions requested regarding the parking in the February fourth...
Right.
Twenty nineteen report, all, all the conditions requested are, are related to site plan, and not to the minor variance application, but, but if there are, you know, we'd be happy to, uh, have a look at them.
All right, we'll hear from the opposition, and then we'll hear back from you, thank you very much, so just for the record, sir, your name?
Madam Chair, my name is Beno Inola, I live at three Concord Place in North York, but, uh, just for clarification, I'm an active member of the Estonian community in Toronto, and also a shareholder of Estonian House in Toronto Limited, which will be the eventual owner of the Estonian International Center, I am an industrial engineer, a former director of operations for Canada Post, an owner of three retail businesses, and a professor of business management at Fanchal College, I was also the vice president of Heritage London Foundation, which managed two high-end event facilities in London, Ontario, not unlike the one we're proposing here, the proposed variance is not a minor variance, and is at odds with the general intent and purpose of the city zoning code, I concur, as I've often told, uh, LAR, that the architectural design is appropriate for the area, however, as I've also told them, it is dysfunctional, and not in compliance with the bylaws and their intent, my objective here is to address four specific areas of concern, the bylaw requires a minimum of nineteen parking spots, as per Avi Bashar of the Engineering Development, and only zero parking spots are proposed, second, by seeking a variance to the parking requirement, the developer avoids the regulation requiring him to provide handicap parking, three, the financial viability of the facility is dependent on an aggressive marketing plan for the grand hall, as a high-end facility seating up to two hundred and fifty people at one time, no provision has been made for accommodating event catering, trucks, and the ability to surface the facility with rental equipment, there is also, number four, there is no provision on the plan for access by service vehicles, both for general maintenance vehicles, and there is no formal plan for the removal of garbage or any of that, that true, that is a result of, uh, of the events, first, in terms of parking, the facility is not a local community facility, it is intended as the cultural home for a widely dispersed community of people with Estonian heritage, most of them living in the metropolitan area, who will be commuting to the center by automobile from the suburbs, the applicant has referred to a proxy site, nine fifty-eight Broadview Avenue, uh, which has seventy-two parking spots, LMM Engineering has stated that the peak demand of twelve vehicles at nine fifty-eight Broadview Avenue occurred between four thirty and five PM on Tuesday, March the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, this is a total fabrication, and I'm embarrassed to say that this is an engineering report, 'cause I'm an engineer as well, in logistics and transportation management, the parking demand for the, for the Madison property is projected to mirror this proxy site, during the weekdays, I do gardening there, and rarely are there less than twenty-six cars in the parking lot, community activities take place in the evenings on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, the parking demand on these days often exceeds capacity, okay, Saturday mornings, we have a very active preschool program with participation by over sixty kids, and all brought there by their parents by car, it is also an event-based facility, we have salsa club on Fridays, weddings, wakes, anniversaries, performances on weekends, all of them max out the parking provided at the facility for, of seventy-two vehicles, the rest of the vehicles provide, parked on the street, the parking consultant has more, also mentioned in that famous parking study that is supplemental, that the proposed site, which is on Madison and Avenue, is expected to generate a parking demand of a now, of around nine spaces on weekdays, and five spaces on a week, uh, weekend, this is inconsistent with reality, this consultant is simply and utterly not believable, we cannot expect the neighborhood to absorb all the extra parking load that this event facility will generate, and certainly, we must be prepared to absorb some of it ourselves, it has been suggested that there are excess parking spots at Tartu College, the ten surface parking lots that are behind the restaurant are used by service vehicles servicing Tartu College, if the Estonian Center proceeds as designed, the spots will be stranded by the proposed wall of the Estonian Center, that is not available anymore, there is no excess parking spots at Tartu College, their parking requirements overlap by vents, those of the Estonian Center, the next point is a... The next point is a sore point with me, it's handicap parking. The city regulations require that at least one handicap parking spot be provided for every 25 parking spots required by the bylaw. Ironically, the building has been designed to be handicapped accessible inside, and they've just published a big report floating about how handicapped accessible they are. But there is no provision to accommodate handicap access by vehicles. Seeking an amendment to allow for zero parking, in fact, obviates this requirement as presented in the transportation report. There are no handicapped parking spots at Tartu College. Handicapped staff that work at Tartu College use the parking lot at 9 Madison. When the lot is full, this handicap staff has no choice but to return home. The elimination of all parking at 9 Madison is a major concern to them.
You're at five and a half minutes, so if you can wrap up, would you?
Okay.
Please.
Anyway, it's a travesty. The other thing is in terms of loading, and my problem is that there is no... I would like to show this, I did a review, I'll have a written report given to the staff as well, but in fact, the space at Tartu College. This is the service area behind the restaurant, and on a particular Monday, this was all full and used. The parking lot at 9 Madison, all 35 spaces were used, everything. There wasn't a single spot available for need of parking.
Okay.
Then, in terms of catering, or in terms of getting rid of garbage, et cetera, Tartu College is right beside Madison. This is their garbage exit. The other thing that is there is the proposal that we will not have to have an exit or way of getting stuff into the place. When Tartu College did a catering job in their basement, lower level, this is how they cater the joint. You will notice the catering trucks are parked on the sidewalk in the boulevard, and more or less because the service is all... You'll notice also that, number one...
We're at seven and a half minutes, so if you could wrap up, please.
Okay. And in terms of access, you have clear garbage, the garbage truck that is big, and that has to pop all everything.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Okay, could you please just speak to the matters that have been raised by the objector, please?
Pretty quick, I guess the main kind of points made by Mr. Inola is that the variances are not minor and don't address the bylaw and the intent of the bylaw. Just in terms of parking, the intent of the bylaw is to provide the appropriate number of parking space to support the demand for parking on the site. I'm not a transportation planner, I don't believe Mr. Inola is a transportation planner. The transportation planners, kind of input into development are LMM Engineering and Gopala at the City of Toronto and Transportation Services, both of which agree that the appropriate amount of parking on the site is zero. In order to address or to provide the intent of the bylaw, if we're providing the appropriate amount of parking for the demand on site, I think we are meeting the intent and spirit of the zoning bylaw. Just related to loading and servicing, there is no loading space required on the site, as per the Transportation Services report, and there's no variance required to reduce the number of amount of loading on a site. It's simply not an issue.
So how are you suggesting that's going to happen, then?
It'll be done whichever way that it works right now. I'm assuming that for the photos that Mr. Inola put up on the screen, there would have been some sort of permit with the city to let it happen. And maybe, Alar, if you can speak to that as well?
My name is Alar Congatz, I'm with Congatz Architects. With regards to servicing of the site, that will be done in conjunction with Tartu College and the service area that's being redeveloped. So the city has, when we started out, the city planning had expressed a desire to consolidate service areas within the block, so that those are limited to certain areas within the block. And what is being proposed is that the service area in conjunction with Tartu College will be the location for the servicing of both buildings. The images that were shown in terms of the rear parking, Tartu College is undertaking some internal renovations and upgrades to the upper floors, they're student residents, and it happened to be that there are numbers of service vehicles there related to the construction of the site, the work that's being done within Tartu College.
I'm just looking at the report, it looks like the college has 32 below grade spots and 10 above grade.
Right.
So your agreement's going to allow for 15 to 20 spots to be used by yourself. Now, is that based on sort of your events or more or less outside college hours where you would anticipate more people driving? Or how did you come to the numbers and what you need?
That was done on the availability of parking within the lower levels of Tartu College. It was a number that Tartu College had proposed as being reasonable, and that wasn't being utilised by Tartu College.
I see, so that's kind of just on a general...
Correct, and there's no intention right now. There is a plan in the works where the parking space potentially behind, the existing parking within the Tartu site is also being maintained. There is some potential to renovate and to alter the small parking or loading ramp that's six inches above grade. The intent is to level that off so that vehicles can pass through and not use the adjacent parking lot.
So are you intending to enter into a formal agreement with the college for the provision and use of those parking spaces? As noted in the correspondence that we have here, because I understood in your earlier part of your submission, that that wasn't happening anymore.
Yeah, so that was considered at the time, and it's still under consideration, and I can't speak to it in detail as much as Alar can, but I'll just say that we did bring it up to city staff, and they wanted to know more details about it, and we looked at it again and confirmed that even without having that agreement, the proposal does, even without that agreement completely, on its own, it meets the parking requirements, parking demands and the loading demands of the site.
With zero.
Of zero, exactly.
Yeah.
So that agreement will probably, or may go forward, I'm not sure, but the key is that even without that, the site on its own and the variances are appropriate.
Normally, when you're doing an application of destination, there's a prospective agreement. In my eight years, eight, nine years in committee, the party would bring forward the copy of the agreement, a draft agreement, for the committee to be able to decide, and in this nature, you're not providing anything, you're just telling us that you don't intend to, and then you intend to.
The discussions are ongoing with regards to sharing the parking below grade, but those, again, those parking spots are not required by transportation plan.
It would be above and beyond anything required by transportation planning. There have been no issues raised with parking by planning, by Transportation Services.
But the variance is here.
The variance is here, absolutely.
So it is required.
To have an event space, I guess I'm wrapping my head around the use of the building, not just for community facilities, but also for event space, that there's no parking arrangement at all, and the suggestion is that the demand can be... I'd like to hear a little bit more about how the demand for, there can't be zero requirements for parking, for the uses you're intending for this centre. So, based on the parking study and based on the fact, where are these people going to park when they come?
So I could pull up an image, and I'll just quickly just put it up, and it's a little hard to see, I guess, but what I'll point out is just, again, the location of the site. And I'm sure you know already, but it's hard to appreciate just how transit supportive the location is.
No, we understand where the location is.
We know it's near transit.
Parking study, I'll get to that, but I just wanted to point out, just, it literally is behind the Sabrina subway station.
No, we understand that.
We know that.
We understand exactly where the property is.
And then in terms of the parking study, and I'll, again, I'm not an expert on parking, but I'll try to summarize the key points, is that the consultant did a parking survey at the current Estonian Centre, which is approximate site, given it's the same use, it's going to be, again, the same cultural centre, which is in a different location.
Does it have the same uses? Is it rented out as for weddings and other facilities? Is the capacity of the current centre the same?
So they, in the study, I'm not sure if you have it as part of your materials...
The Estonian Centre down front?
The Estonian Centre. So it's part of the study time periods, they looked at weekdays, they looked at Tuesdays between 7:30 and 9:30 p.m., which is when they say approximately 65 children with 20 adults attend, as well as immense choir practice of approximately 20 to 25 adults. They looked at weekend evenings, which is when you have banquets up to 400 attendees.
Sorry to cut you off, but where is that in proximity to the Danforth and On Street parking?
It is about, I believe, 500 metres or 600 metres north of Danforth subway station. In terms of parking, I don't know offhand.
There are a lot of Green Pea parking lots around in that areas, but without knowing exactly where it is, it's kind of hard.
Yeah, so then, kind of similar situation, in this case, the parking study found that there was going to be a requirement for nine spaces at the peak period on weekdays, and five spaces at the peak period on weekends. And they did a study of also parking utilization in the area. I can find the exact numbers for you, but essentially, they found that...
Yeah, okay. This is not helping to put this into context, for me, anyway. What I'm getting at is, can you give us where there's parking available? Because clearly, not everybody's going to take transit, right? So Danforth, there's a lot of parking, On Street parking, side streets, so where is it for this site?
There are several areas in the area. D is the subject site.
Yep.
There is a parking lot here, it's not a TPA or another provider, I can't recall the hand. There's street parking on Giro Street, there's a street parking, a parking on Madison Avenue. There's no parking on Giro, but there is parking on Madison Avenue, there's parking on Loudon. There's another lot on Sabrina Road over here, just an ordinary subway station. There's a, it's actually, I can't underestimate the size of this lot here, it's actually quite a bit bigger, and there is a Green Pea parking next to it, which just doesn't appear to have been surveyed. There is another parking area here, behind the metro, and another parking area to the south. There is...
But that parking area you just pointed out before, that's by the grocery store, isn't it?
Correct.
So it's not available for use of your, it's private property, is it not?
I believe it is.
I don't know, I'm asking the question.
No.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
There's no parking here, there's no parking lot at the Boise School.
But are you just listing parking lots, or are these publicly available lots? Publicly available?
We don't know.
Okay.
There are multiple paid parking lots in the area, and this is where people will park.
Pardon?
There are multiple paid lots in the area, and people have plenty of parking to find in this surrounding area, within no more than a block away.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions, panel members? Okay, we're in committee, discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, we've heard from the applicant, and we've also heard from the opposition. Mr. Inola spoke very diligent and very experienced about this matter. I think we can continue talking for the whole day about where all these parking lots are located in Toronto, but we haven't addressed the issue of what really is required. And I, you know, this is one of those times when I think that the applicant would have done well by meeting with the opposition and seeing, hearing from a professional perspective of what exists and how they may benefit to that. Having heard the evidence, I was quite convinced that the opposition was quite knowledgeable of what he was talking about and about issues. I am still not satisfied with the issue. I don't think the issue of the applicant has addressed the requirement of parking. And in my eight and a half years in committee of adjustment, whenever we have dealt with parking with any other outside bodies, we usually have some kind of agreement before to provide to the committee, and in this particular case, there is none. We continue to hear about what may have existed somewhere else. I'm not convinced that this application will meet the four tests. I am not convinced that the application is ready. I, you know, I don't know what the position of my peers are, and at this time, just something that has been just seemed to be gone astray. I want to move for refusal of this application.
Just some comments?
My comments would be that I'm concerned with the parking, not so much the other variances. I would agree with Mr. Russell that generally speaking, there is a requirement or there's already an agreement in place. I would be comfortable approving the application, but refusing the variances for parking, and instead, having a requirement that an agreement is entered into to have the required number of parking spots addressed.
Within 300 metres.
Within three, the college is, you know, the college is next door, so it seems to me that that would be doable. Because in terms of the actual variances, what this is going to be used for with respect to the building, I think it fits in the context of the location and, you know, the purpose and the transit. So that would be where I would be inclined to go with it.
So I just have one question of staff. Generally, it's Transportation Services parking, generally with off-site agreements, it's usually within 300 metres, isn't it? Isn't that the language, they entering in a private agreement within 300 metres of the subject site?
Which, again, would be doable, I would be fine, I would be comfortable to put that as the condition. That would be the motion that I would put forward, so I don't know which one we want to try first.
You would say you can deny my motion?
No, that's what I just said, so Madam Chair can decide if we can go with Mr. Russell's motion and see where it goes.
So Mr. Russell, would you be prepared to amend your motion, contingent with it being conditional upon the applicant making arrangements for entering into agreement for off-site parking a maximum of 300 metres from the subject site?
Yeah, we are unable to force the applicant to make...
Well, they wouldn't get his variances, then.
Yeah, to make a decision. If they want to seek a defer, I think there's a good opportunity for them to talk with the opposition and to see how they can resolve the issues. We can't force the applicant to make that agreement. We can't force a condition like that on the applicant, we can't police it.
So your refusal motion?
Well, we could ask them to defer, because I think they have, if they could speak with the opposition, the opposition has some good ideas about how to resolve this matter, and I think there's...
So is your motion for refusal or deferral?
My motion, at this point, I don't want to refuse it, I would ask for deferral, and I'd recommend that the applicants meet with the opposition and see how they could attempt to work things out together.
Or come back with an agreement?
We come back with an agreement of parking, but I'm not prepared to support this application as it stands.
So, is the first, is the motion you'd like to put forward at the moment, is that it be deferred to allow them to have discussion with applicant, or enter, investigate or explore an agreement?
Come back with an agreement, yes.
So that's your motion at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a motion for deferral, for discussion with the objector, or discussion of an off-site parking agreement?
And, yeah.
Is there a second for that motion?
No.
Okay, so that motion fails, so do we have another motion, then?
Okay, through you, Madam Chair. My motion would be to approve the application, but refusing variance number two under 569 2013, as well as the one number three under bylaw 43886 for the parking spots, and to put in a condition that the applicant enter into an agreement to secure parking within a 300-meter radius to a minimum of 19 parking spots.
So, okay, but, so excuse me, we're in committee. So just for clarification of that motion, so if you're ranting about removing those two variances, you're saying that they need to comply on-site, and then you want to add that condition? So if you wanted to, just my thinking process here, if you wanted to approve the application, which would say they don't have to allow any parking on-site, but make it conditional on that they have to provide parking in a subject of 19 spots within...
To satisfy the variances.
Within 300 meters of the subject site. So those are, so I think you, it can either be...
Yes.
That's a better way, then, to word it, would be to satisfy the parking variances, and then if they are not able, then those variances would be denied. Maybe Madam Deputy...
They wouldn't be able to comply.
Better word for this.
It's ambiguous. How can you have an ambiguous motion like that?
Well, no, the motion would be that the variances are approved, subject to them getting the condition that they enter into an agreement for provision of 19 parking spots within 300 meters of the subject application, which is not, which is a condition that this committee has considered previously. I will give you the fact that most people have come with that already arranged and advanced, that, and that is the condition upon which it's usually approved. So that's, from staff, is that, would that be the best way to...
Then it would be leaving all the variances and basically the same order.
And if they don't have the agreement, then they don't get the variance.
So typically, the condition that you're referring to speaks to the owner arranging a lease for, in this case, 19 parking spots within 300 meters of the subject property that is surplus to the requirements of the zoning bylaw for the owner's site to the satisfaction of the manager of transportation services.
That's typically... That's the clause that I would, that I'm recollecting, which is the common clause that we would normally put in in similar situations if the committee was so inclined. So that would be my...
Okay, so the motion would be for that, as well as including the, there's a heritage condition, I believe, and the engineering condition?
Planning.
And the planning condition, yeah, that's right.
So anything is...
So planning is May 9th, the report, which is regarding a pedestrian walkway.
Provision of...
I'm sorry?
Provision of a public... The planning report of May 9th.
Right, May 9th report.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be my motion.
And the, that clause, the condition?
Sorry, yeah, the condition, yeah.
Those three conditions in total.
Right, heritage, planning, and that condition. And the engineering one, I guess, has been satisfied. Like, what if the Feb. 4th, it's under site plan, right? So we don't need that.
Right, so it's the heritage, the planning...
And the condition for the parking.
And for the parking.
Yeah.
Do you have a second, Chair?
Yeah.
All second. All in favor?
Are you dissenting?
Dissenting, yes.
So your application is approved on those conditions?
Thank you for your question.
Okay, we're going to just take a five, quick five-minute break.
I don't, I just have, I know, there's six applications. There's, you know, Michael? Hang on, is your Michael?
Hi, my name is Jim Faffler. I'm the agent with Macau Architects at 3 Bridgman Avenue in Toronto.
You talked to the...
I think we've agreed to sort of continue our discussions, a lot of which don't necessarily address the variances before you.
Or wish to proceed today?
Absolutely.
Okay, so please proceed with your presentation and questions.
Yeah, so I'm happy to be presenting this house to you today. As you can see, it's a fairly traditionally styled house, which should be very much in keeping with both the character of the neighborhood as a whole and with the street. The first variance of the variances I'd like to talk about is the variance for height. There is one under the new bylaw, but there is not one under the old bylaw. And as you'll be aware, of course, the character of the neighborhood was established with houses that were built under the old bylaw, and so I think the fact that we don't need an old law variance is proof enough that this is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. But I think if you look along the street, you'll find that it's characterized by houses with very substantial roofs, and also characterized by two and a half stories that do in fact have attic stories, some of them with very substantial gables. There's a plan, the front elevation on the second page of the sheet. I'd like to go to the third page. And on the third page there, you can see the blue outline is the outline of the sort of as-of-right footprint of the house within the setbacks. And as you can see, we fit very closely within that. We are in fact asking for a very small front yard setback variance, but you can see that as the bylaw intends, we're actually set back an intermediate distance between the two neighboring houses, and in fact, we're set further back than the existing house. At the back of the house, you can see that the main front, main back wall of the house on both sides would actually be further back in an as-of-right envelope, and you can see we do push a little bit beyond that, about the allowable sort of single-story extension would be at the back, but in fact, we're far more towards the center of the back than we otherwise would have to be. There is an additional length variance for a portion of the building for parking, which is entirely below grade, so that doesn't really have any impact on anyone. We are asking for 1.2-meter side yard setback variance on the west, but you can see that's for those very two small portions of the building that stick beyond that blue line. And as you'll be aware, under the legacy bylaw, it was as-of-right to go 0.9 meters, and there's a whole raft of precedent of approvals for committee of adjustment for variances of 0.9 meters or even less, and another raft of variances that are at that 1.2 meter. So what we're doing is very, very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The next page shows a similarly styled house on Dunve, or, on Dunlow. And the reason that I'm showing this photo of the house is just to say it's a very similar styled roof. And you can see, these two houses are almost exactly the same height, but you can see in this house on Dunlow in the picture, that because the roof is in fact set back behind a parapet, and it slopes back in a hip fashion on all sides, it really recedes greatly in perspective. So you can see, in this case, the dormer actually appears to be higher than the roof. And that's the same, in this case, this lot is actually 15 feet wider, the house is almost exactly the same height, and in a similar way, you know, there's no, we don't need an old law height variance, and in the new law, you know, it's not going to be impactful at all, as well as the fact that I mentioned the fact that the OMB has determined that the new bylaw height rule is not in keeping with the official plan, particularly in neighborhoods like this. Finally, we have collected a set of committee of adjustment variances in the neighborhood. You can see we've highlighted there in blue where the letters of support from neighbors are, including one of the immediately adjacent neighborhoods and a number of other neighbors in the immediate vicinity. In terms of the GFA variances, I'd say that in this area, variances of 0.8 or below are basically generally considered acceptable. There's two variances on this block of FSI variances greater than 0.8, we're asking for 0.77, so very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The same, you can see length variances, height variances, you can actually see five houses on this table which received old law height variances, so, but were, as I said, very much in keeping with the neighborhood on the height. And then side yard variances, again, many, many variances of 1.2, and as a matter of fact, 1.9 or 0.9 or even less. So if you had any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
No, we'll hear from the other parties, and then we'll answer. So whoever would like to speak, is just one of you speaking, or?
We'll go up together.
Okay, thank you. We have your names and addresses, please.
My name is Margaret Spence, and my husband and I are the owners of 228 Dunvegan.
Okay, and your name, please?
I'm Jane Spence, I'm her daughter.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we have lived in that house for 58 years, and during that time, raised seven children and loved our garden. To me, the garden is all. I'm an avid gardener, the garden has been on some tours, so it is quite pleasant, and it totally has depended on the huge maple tree in our yard, which spans at least 60 feet and gives this beautiful shade garden, which is full of plants adapted to shade. So, and it came as a tremendous blow to us when the WAs suggested that the tree needed to be taken down so that they could proceed with excavating for a much builder, bigger building next door. I don't think anybody has any idea what that has meant to me and our family, to think that the tree has to go. They initially suggested that it had had damage over the years, and they could have it declared as an imminent hazard so that the city could order it to be taken down. We have had two eminent arborists look at the tree. Chris Plant from the urban forestry department has visited, and I think you probably have a note about that, and he verbally said it was not in imminent danger and did not have to go. We also had an opinion from Thomas Cohen, who looks after all the trees on the University of Toronto campus, who also said it was not in imminent danger.
So forestry, just for information, forestry has recommended, should the committee approve this application, that it be subject to a condition that they would have to submit an application for a permit to injure or remove a privately owned tree?
Right.
So forestry has made that submission, the committee, that should...
So you are saying that I would have to be the one to make the...
No, what I'm saying is, just so you know, forestry has made a comment on the application, and said that should the committee decide to approve the application, the applicant would have to make an application to Urban Forestry for a permit to injure or remove a privately owned tree.
Because...
Then it becomes forestry's determination whether or not that permit is granted. So forestry has weighed in with a comment on the application.
Okay.
Just so, just in case you didn't know that.
Right, so any excavation would be very damaging to the roots, and the tree would die. So I suppose at this point, all I can say is that if we were to allow that tree to come down ahead of its time, it has been, it has damaged, it has been looked after very, very, very well over the years, and I think that was agreed to by Chris Plant from forestry. So if we ever had to agree to it coming down, it would be simply to be a good neighbor, because we hope to live here for years to come. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify a few of the points more to the committee side.
Yeah.
So obviously, we are really concerned about the size of this house. It's 220% larger than allowable, the bylaws, it's 117% taller, 170% longer, and it has twice the allowable balconies on the backside. So the rear side of my parents' house, obviously, is really important to them, and I now have two looming balconies. And as well, they have some new windows on the side that look right into their sitting room. So in an attempt to be good neighbors, we actually drew up an agreement with the WAs that we submitted to them on Monday. We didn't have a lot of time, we had just the 10 days before this hearing. They got it Monday, they have not completed reviewing it, they said they didn't have time or whatever. I thought the agreement was quite reasonable, and we were hoping not to have to be here today. But that's our concern, that we need to put this on record, that we are kind of getting pushed into a corner here, and we want to make sure that we protect the best interests of 228.
Okay. So really, we don't think these are minor variances. I don't think the, like, the sheer mass of that building is normal to the neighborhood, even though they've tried to present that way. And I don't think it really meets the intent of the neighborhood. I think, having a family that's lived there for 58 years, I think we know what has been put in and what they're asking for. There's a pretty bad track record on the street, across the street, there's a build that's been going on for 12 years.
that's been going on for 12 years, not complete yet, now up for sale. The next door building to my parents is a new build that's been vacant for four or five years. So, yeah, there's some concerns.
Okay.
The buildings going up, how many, apart from those two buildings you mentioned, one next door, one across the road, how many other Dunvegan is at this mass and scale?
From the looks of what I can see on Google satellite maps, this one is going to be bigger than what I've seen in the neighborhood, as far as the usage of that land. They basically, as you can see, a lot of them have the addition that the building used to have, but now they're filling that in with full mass. So to have it at 75%, 77% of the lot is massive. And then on top of that, to have the underground excavation that takes up half of the rear backyard, and then a pool, there's barely any space for actually even just water runoff, and it's going to rely on my parents' backyard to take that drainage and all the extra underground work that they're doing. They have a five-car underground garage.
My question's actually related to balconies and platforms. They're asking for quite a large one on the second story. Are there, are they prevalent in the area?
Not to that extent. The previous building had a small, just almost a Juliet, but I have not seen either side anything like that.
Okay.
And then, just to note as well, the one variance on my parents' side, on the west side, is a concern. There has been a fence line in that place for...
Oh, forever.
Since it was built, that allows my parents to drive down their driveway. The fence line is not actually on the property line. It's, it infringes on their property line by a few inches, but it's enough to not allow vehicles down the driveway. So there is an attachment to the deed that notes that we have the access to the rear of our building, and that fence line should stay. But just because they are coming even closer now, we are quite concerned that we're going to lose our access to the rear building.
You're talking about the side yard setback?
Yeah, yeah.
But the deed is written, it says, there's a...
There is a...
Written on the deed, so it's a civil matter.
Adjudication of the deed. But just to note that even that building's getting even closer, so there will be no, once a fence is in place, I don't think anyone could even walk past that side of the building anymore.
Great. Thank you.
What about, sorry, what about the depth in the backyard? What about depth? Are there movement towards, um, that is excessive for your parents?
So currently, the addition, it will be beyond even the big brick wall that we stare at today. That was an addition that was put on in the 70s, and now it's gonna, gonna be bigger,
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, could you please come up and respond to the issues that have been raised, please? And thank you.
Yeah. Well, as you pointed out, urban forestry has submitted a report, and so of course, we'll be complying with all the forestry conditions, you know, that are imposed. We have, you know, been talking with these neighbors for months, and I think Stephen has said that, you know, they'll absolutely have the tree taken down by an arborist that their neighbors choose, and have the replacement trees as, you know, required by the city.
Provided.
Planted, yeah, provided the tree is in fact removed. And they'll have those trees planted of a kind of a mutually agreeable species and location, you know, by the same arborist. And I think they're prepared to come into an agreement about that. I think the same is true of the issue of the fence. I mean, like you said, it's a civil matter. I do have a photo of, yeah, you can see the fence in question. It was, it was mentioned that there is this large brick wall on the site, and I'd point out that the new wall of the house is actually going to be further away from their property than that wall is right now. And you can see, that's a view from their sitting room that looks at this wall, and the new wall that's being built is going to be further away from that window. And, you know, the, the new wall is going to extend further back, it's true, but the new wall is going to extend less far back than an as-of-right wall would extend. In terms of the use of their driveway, I just point out that they, you know, according to the survey, the existing driveway, you know, to the property line there on their property is more than two and a half meters wide. Yeah, and I think, as we've had discussions, and I think we're willing to come to some sort of agreement about replacing the fence and about the trees, but I think, you know, we just, we just aren't yet there yet. But I don't think any of those are really germane to the issues before the committee. In terms of the mass of the house, I would say that on the same block, 212 and 215 Dunvegan, both got approvals from this committee in excess of .8. 249 Dunvegan got approval for .85. Very nearby, on Hill Home, .79 was also approved by this committee. And that's, I think, you know, definitely in the nearby and comparable area. And in terms of the balcony, I think we'd be very happy to accept that the committee apply a condition that you have a privacy screen on the west side of this balcony. It's very far from the east property line. There is a third floor balcony. The third floor balcony, as you may be aware, if you have a third story, you need a balcony at that story for egress under, you know, the current building code.
What about the ones you mentioned just now of the mass of .8? What is the lot area? Would you know what the lot area would be in the end? How big are they?
Well, you can see them on the map, I guess, if you, they're comparable, so 212 and You know, it's hard to say. 215 looks like it could be a little bit deeper. 212 is, you know, just another typical Dunvegan lot. So I do not know what the... And both of those, you can see, actually got side yard setbacks of .91 meters. And then 212, they got a length variance beyond 17 meters of 13.86, so that'd be in excess of 30 meters. That's an old law length variance.
And your number six variance, you're seeking the building length of 8.84. So the, the normal requirement is something meters, and you're going like 11 meters over the basement.
Yeah, so if you take a look at that third page that shows the site plan, there is in fact a below-grade basement garage.
Is that common in the area?
It is common. I've worked on a number of them myself.
On this street?
On this street, no, on Warren Road, which is very nearby. I've done two. I think, I've done them in a number of issues, places with the city. I mean, there's no, there's no impact of that garage, because it is below grade, it doesn't necessarily affect the view, and I think the drainage is going to be very properly taken care of. You can see in the letter that we've already suggested that the front yard driveway is going to be permeable paving. And then in terms of something like this, you know, there's a soil layer over there. It's not like roofing where you have waterfall on there and immediately run off. And then there is going to be, of course, a grading consultant's submission for the building permit application, and then there's going to be, have to be a final sign-off on the lot grading before it's finished. So there will not be, and that's something else that we've discussed with the neighbors, that, you know, we'd be happy to provide them, you know, when we come to an agreement, part of that would be providing them assurances that we've complied with the city requirements for lot grading and runoff.
What about your ancillary, your ancillary building? Will you have plumbing and all that stuff inside there?
The cabana in the back?
Ancillary building, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's going to have pool equipment and a change area. So that's, there's, I know there, I think it does trigger a variance. I think if you have cooking facility, it's too small for that. No, it's just pool.
So is there a reason why you can't comply with the rear yard setback for that? Is it just a desire from a design perspective?
I think, again, it's one of those things that under the legacy bylaw, you wouldn't have had that half the height requirement. And I think it's, yeah, essentially that if you push it, it's, it's common in the neighborhoods. I suppose if you brought it in, then you would have less sort of open space in the backyard. But I think it's, it's very common in this neighborhood and in similar older Toronto neighborhoods to have those ancillary structures basically tucked away at the back of the property. These properties themselves are very deep, so they often have screening in the back, so you don't have objection to that. Typically, people are very kind of accepting of that.
You're still looking for the two entrances on the driveway? That's why the landscaping?
Yeah, so, again, it's very, I think I mentioned this in the letter, but this is very prevalent on the street. The existing house...
Has it.
Has it. Several of the other houses on this block have it. And when you have that, it makes it very difficult to comply with the 60% landscaping. However...
This is a new build, so you have a choice whether or not you want to still have that.
Yeah, it's, it's very common in the neighborhood.
So you're looking to maintain that.
We're looking to maintain that, that's correct.
What's the existing front landscaping?
I, we didn't calculate that. I mean, I can show you the survey.
Is it similar or less than what you're proposing?
I think it's, there might be a little bit more soft area, but the new, the existing drive would not be allowed to be built by the City of Toronto today. I can just put this out. And you've got a copy of the survey. The City of Toronto would never let you have a driveway come into the street obliquely this way. Our driveway has to come in, and it has to be basically straight from the street to behind the property line, and then you have to park. So that's what we're doing. And so our, our, I don't know if we necessarily have a lot more hardscape if you count the boulevards. We probably do. But that's why we agreed to make it permeable paving. That was in discussion with a member of the planning. And if you took a look at our plans, you also see that we plant two new large growing native shade trees to replace the two pear trees, which are kind of a nuisance in the boulevard area there.
Thank you. Any other questions, other members? Okay, we're in committee then, discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm struggling a little bit with this one because of the number of variances on a new build. I know the area well, I know the homes are larger. The original ones were deemed to be large in that era, and now they're getting bigger and bigger. I'm also looking at the chart for the properties on Dunvegan that the applicants applied. Yes, the variances are asked for, but not necessarily for all of the same ones as are being asked for here. So in some cases, yes, the length is similar to what's being asked for here, but then they're not asking for the FSI. And one of you asked the question about the lot size, I believe Mr. Russell, and trying to get an idea of how these numbers compare. So I'm, I'm somewhat conflicted on this one, because the, the drawing certainly does illustrate that in terms of the massing and the way it sits on the lot, that it's not that much different from what would be allowed as-of-right. But I do question the number of variances. The, the platform, that's five times what's permitted on the second story balcony. So I do have some concerns with some of the variances.
The variances, as they said, there are quite a few in the variances, and yes, there are cumulative variances that makes an application, are not minor. But the difficulty about what I see here and what, what is the reality in view of what exists on Dunvegan, is that based on the presentation, it's quite clear that all the, the, the houses in Dunvegan are in themselves very large. And in fact, the opposition spoke about other houses that continue to exist there that have not been finished and continue to be larger units than what normally exists. And this seems to be normal for the area. I mean, if you put this building inside there and you complete the building, then there shouldn't be any difficulties with what's there. I know the, the issue of, of the trees that will be replaced, won't be the same tree, it will be a new tree, replaced by the city professionals who do it. Accumulatively, it looks off, but the variances are unique to that particular area. The massing is, in some cases, look excessive, but again, it's unique to that area. I don't think there's any difficulty in the whole issue of what is the mass or what is the, the scale of the, of the units within depth or length. So...
I think that's, I think the footprint, you know, similarly conflicted in terms of the key of nature, but when you see the diagram with respect to the footprint of the building, as both my colleagues have discussed, it's, it's not really much a change in the footprint. I do have a concern with respect, I recognize the need from a fire code perspective with respect to the platform on the third story, but that does, I'm not comfortable with, it's not necessary to have that size of platform, you know, five times what the, what the bylaw permits. Those would be my observations. With respect to the retention of the tree, they do have to make a permit. Whether or not it's granted is beyond our control.
I would add that the design itself is, is very sensitive to the character of the But that platform is quite large.
So a motion by someone?
The footprint exists, and the scale is not, is not excessive beyond what's normally in the neighborhood. I'm, I'm going to say it's not outside of the comfort of the neighborhood. And with regards to the, the platform is, it may be one or maybe unique to that particular building, I'm going to move for approval.
Subject to the forestry condition number two?
Subject to forestry condition number two.
Is there a second or a second? All in favor? The application's approved, subject to that condition? So we'll hear item number 11, 126 Ava Road. Please make sure you've filled out a card if you haven't already. Okay? I'm going to, yeah. So just so you know, that after this item, we'll be taking one half hour break, and then we'll be back. So if people, you know, want to leave now and come back in at 1:30, then you're, around 1:30, you can be pleased to do so. Okay, 126 Ava Road, committee has before it, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, correspondence from the Assistant Planner to Community Planning, City Planning, Toronto and East York District, eight form letters in support from 121, 122, 128, 132 Ava Road, 133 Duborn, 130 Ava, 131 Duborn, 125 Ava, letter of interest or concern from 124 Ava, and correspondence in opposition from 124. Is the opposition still here?
Yes.
Okay, could you please come and sit here, please, ma'am? Thank you very much. Okay. Have you had an opportunity to have a discussion, and have you managed to come to any resolution of the concerns?
Unfortunately, not.
Okay, so can we have a presentation, please? Okay, so can we have a presentation, please?
Sure. My name is Tay Rook, Planner for the owners of the property at 126 Ava Road. The application before you is to construct a two-story, single-detached dwelling with an integral garage. There are variances related to FSI, building length, west side yard setback, and the area of a second-story terrace. As it relates to the FSI, the bylaw requires our permits 0.4 times, and the proposal is seeking 0.72. On the screen, the subject site's been outlined in red. And those properties that have been highlighted in green are those properties that are 0.7 times or greater in terms of FSI that have either been approved or existing in the area. In addition to that, there is a building length variance that's being sought at 19.6, where 17 meters is permitted. And also on the map that's before you, those pink dots that have been indicated on the map are those variances or variances that have been approved with houses of 19 meters or greater in terms of building length. But as it relates to this particular file, as it relates to this particular case, you'll note the areas that have been highlighted in green, which is at the front being the bottom and the rear being the top. At the front, there's a small bay window that gets calculated as part of building length. And also at the rear, the big square at the top is a one-story bumpout for a breakfast area that's also being counted as the building length. You'll also note that the building, the bumpout, the breakfast bumpout, has been set back further from the east side yard, which is the right, to be, give, provide additional buffer to the adjacent neighbor to the east. You'll also note that the outline of the existing building has been hatched in red. The east side yard, which is again the right, the proposed building is actually set back slightly further. And on the west, where variances being sawed at 0.87 meters, we're matching the existing side yard setback on the west lot line. So along the east, slightly larger than what's existing there today in excess of the bylaw requirements, 1.2, at 1.22. And you'll also note that the setback of the one-story bumpout is almost two meters for the one-story. There is a second-story terrace that's located on top of the, the bumpout at 7.94, or sorry, 7.52 square meters. And right at 128 Ava Road, which is the house to the left, there is a second-story deck. And also to the north, to the north of the subject site of 133, 131 DuBourne, there are second-story decks of similar sizes. So this is something that's existing in the area. And no issues have been brought forth by the planning department or any other departments for that matter. And there are some concerns which, from the neighbor at 124, which I can address after she speaks.
Any questions at this time? So ma'am, may we hear from you, please? And firstly, if we can have your name and address, please.
My name is Dorothy Hollingsworth. I live at 124 Ava Road. Unlike a lot of other people here today, I'm representing myself. I'm a widow. My husband is deceased, and so I'm very much alone in approaching you. I live in a bungalow, and the proposed two-story rebuild is about double the existing floor space of the, the current residence. The existing and slightly wider, wider proposed space between the two houses is a mere six-feet corridor. My side door and bedroom windows on the west side of my bungalow will be dramatically affected by the loss of light, privacy, and air due to the proposed two-story new build, which will extend to the back west corner of my home. I have here, unlike everybody else-
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Uh, the, the picture from my rear bedroom window shows where the, the existing house comes back. They now propose to take it to the very back of my house, which will mean that there will be no light coming in that window at all. So I have no light on the other two windows facing west. And now this one with that two-story will effectively get rid of whatever other light there is. But in addition to that, they want to put on a, a breakfast nook. And that will be only two and a half feet west of their east wall and my, my west wall. That's referred to in, in variance two. They have agreed to eliminate the roof that was to be over that breakfast nook. But my consultant has recommended that they move the breakfast nook to the middle of the back wall so that whatever remaining light there, there can be won't be totally blocked into my, my back bedroom. They have not agreed to that, so therefore I'm asking the committee to refuse variance two. My husband and I bought this house in 1969, expecting to be able to live in peace and quiet in our one-floor bungalow for our remaining years. So for me to not only suffer all the noise, dirt, possible collapse of the earth from the removal of the existing eight-foot-deep 126 Ava foundation, plus the additional proposed two-feet-deeper excavation, also the potential cracking of my west side foundation and walls are likely to happen due to the jackhammers required to remove not only the existing foundation, but also the swimming pool, as well as probable damage to the three mature trees close to the property line in my backyard. That's really a lot for me to have to bear. But to be effectively cut off from light, air, and privacy to the windows and door on the west side of my house, right back to my rear bedroom window, is most unfair. After all, I was here first. And city bylaws should be about protecting the existing homeowner. If allowed, their dream house will become my nightmare dungeon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
The, the variance number, number two. I know he's seeking 2.3 meters extension on, on the back. Is there any adjustments that could be-
You want the applicant to come back up?
No, no, I'm just asking her, that would satisfy your requirement.
Well, we're proposing that they move that extension towards the middle of the house, which would then obliquely give me a little bit more room or a little bit more light air into my back bedroom.
Thank you so much.
That's, it's, it seems like a-
Well, yes.
A very reasonable request on my part.
I, I guess we'll ask the applicant to address that, okay?
I'm sorry?
We, we will ask the applicant to address your response.
I'm, I'm not quite comprehending that. That's, excuse me.
I'm her consultant, Henry Joseph. I did those drawings. We would just add to variance number two, the extension should be located in the central area of the rear wall.
Okay, so we are going to now have the applicant come and respond to the issues that you've raised. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Sir, could you please come up and speak to the issues that have been raised?
So, just to address briefly the issues. The main issue, what I understand to be, aside from the construction issues, which is not, committee's concerned, that will be addressed to the building permit process if this application is approved. The principal concern is about this breakfast area where this bumpout located at the rear. The committees, as you're aware, the committee's responsibility isn't to consider revisions that are being brought forth by neighbors. This, the application is for a breakfast building length with a one-story element that's located where it's proposed. But in terms of the reasoning behind it, irrespective if it's in the middle or on the side.
But it is our responsibility to consider impact.
No, no, and, and I, that's not what I was meaning. Hopefully you didn't misunderstand. It's not, not to reconsider impact, but it's, I'll get off that point. But basically, right now-
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, the breakfast area is located in line. So the kitchen at the rear, and there's a family room at the rear as well. So the breakfast area is in line with the kitchen that's located at the right portion of the house. To suggest, the proposal to locate that breakfast area to the middle does not work in terms of the layout that's being currently proposed on the plans. With respect to how, what's proposed there right now, as it's laid on the right side, where it's set back two meters from the lot line, from an impact perspective, this is a one-story element. In addition to that, from a sunlight and views perspective, once again, there are second-story balconies that exist throughout the neighborhood. There's also large trees that are located in the rear yard. In addition to the fact that this is a building in, in its entirety, that the principal building itself is 17 meters. It's only this one two-meter element that bumps out. And the building itself is within the height requirements as well. So there is already existing shadows that are casted onto the rear yards of all properties along the north side of, of Ava Road. And this bumpout, I would submit to the committee, would not have that of much of a detrimental impact as in terms of sunlight and enjoyment of the rear yards that currently exist there today.
What about the privacy issue?
The privacy issue, once again, there is second-story decks that are insured. And also, there are, if we could pull up a plan-
With respect to the window, overlook of the windows, both from the, from the breakfast nook and the balcony?
The windows that are spoken of at 124 are located here and here. There are windows here with the bumpout and windows here. So this is nothing that's uncommon for the area for, in terms of having windows that face onto side yards of properties. And I could show you pictures of adjacent properties where it's a similar situation. So, subject site is the red square on the right, the middle being 124, and the left being 122. And so you'll see windows facing onto the rear yards, onto the side yards. So this is nothing new in terms of views or privacy. So this is something that's characteristic of the neighborhood. And once again, once again, you'll note that there's trees that are also located there. And also, there was one concern about some small windows on the east elevation. These two windows that were indicated on the letter from Mr. Hen, from Mr. Joseph about being frosted. We have no issues with that. We could frost those windows.
Okay, so with respect to the second-story terrace?
Yes.
Is, is that a common element in the neighborhood?
Yes, right, right next door, 128.
And the size that you're requesting as well?
I do have a picture of it, but it's covered by trees and canopy, but I could show it to you.
128 has a second story?
Yes.
Of this, of this similar size?
Yes. And also, to the north of the rear yards of 131, 133, to the north of the subject site, similar size and second-story decks.
All right. Any other questions, panel members? Okay, thank you. We're in committee, discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I do hear the concerns of the neighbor in terms of the actual variances and what's in the area. These variances are not out of whack with what's been done in the area. So I, as much as I'm sympathetic, I, I do believe this meets our criteria that we are, you know, need to look at in making our decisions. I would move approval of the application. I, I would be prepared to put in a condition to frost. Which windows are they exactly?
The two side, oh-
Can you give me the elevation, please? So this is, is there a number on this drawing in here? Or the side, the east side elevation? The two most rear main floor windows would be frosted glass. Can we, it's these two.
Second story.
Can I put a cloud on it?
Yes.
Does that work? Okay, so that would be the condition.
Is there a second?
The, the condition, the variance, your condition is to frost those two windows?
Yes. It was actually requested in, in the letter from Mr. Henry Joseph, consultant for 124 Ava Road. And we have no problems with that.
Mrs. Hollingsworth, she requested the windows be frosted through the, through her-
What does it suggest, Mrs. Hollingsworth, privacy?
Sorry?
Was that, was that where she was?
Well, that's my condition, so that's my motion.
Yeah, okay, a second.
Okay, all in favor? Your application's approved with those conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. One condition.
There was nothing else from staff.
Okay, so we are journeying now to resume at 145.